All right.
All right. We find good. We find good. How you doing, Nick? Good, good, good. We have so over in Garwood.
Welcome to the Clark Township Planning Board meeting, Thursday, March 7th, 2024. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by mailing the annual schedule of meetings to the Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, Union County Hall, and tapping to Clark. By posting such annual meeting schedule on the bulletin board in the town hall reserved for such announcements, and by the proper filing of said notice with the township clerk, formal action may be taken at this meeting. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must always be maintained. Can I take attendance? Mayor Bonacorso?
Here.
Mr. Ulrich. Councilman Manitti?
Here.
Mr. Koch? Mr. Triola? Mr. Altman?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Steinberg? Mr. Clay?
Yeah.
Mr. Brocano? Mr. Cruz? Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Ricky? Detective Mederos? Mr. Sarasa? Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from the February meeting? Any questions, comments? If not, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Nate. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All correspondence of planning board is available at Town Hall for viewing by the public, if they so wish. So I'd like a motion dispensed with the reading of correspondence.
Motion.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Nate, all in favor?
Aye.
Onto the amendment resolution. Has everyone had a chance to ring this, read the Spring Enterprise LLC, 6062 Westfield Avenue, Block 106, lots 3 and 4? Resolution? Any questions or comments? If not, I'd like a motion to approve. Thank you, Nate.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike?
Roll call, please.
Hold on one second. Mayor Bonacorso?
Yes.
Councilman Manitti?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Clay?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Next point of business, consistency review area of non-condemnation redevelopment, 175 and 181 Westfield Avenue, Block 77, lots 2 and 4. Has everyone had a chance to read that?
Before you proceed, Mr. Chair, I believe the planner has some comments to make.
Okay.
Well, sure. We prepared, I mean, can I just have a second to pull it up for a second? We prepared a redevelopment plan. It's dated January 31st, 2024. It's for block 77, lots 2 and 4, 175, 181, Westfield Ave. This board previously evaluated and recommended that the area qualified as an area in need of redevelopment. Here, the redevelopment plan largely is consistent with the existing zoning in place for the downtown village district, with some very minor changes. Those changes pertain to some small step packs along Westfield Ave and the like. It's my opinion as the planner that the plan is substantially consistent with the existing regulations in zoning today in a DTV district. To the extent that there are any inconsistencies, they're very minor and contextual in nature, and it's consistent with the municipal master plan. Anything else? That's it. Do we have any questions?
There was no questions on the resolution. If not, I'd like a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Nate. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bonacorso?
Yes.
Councilman Manitti?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Clay?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Next on agenda is site plan application, 27 Westfield Avenue LLC, 2733 Westfield Avenue, Blocks 91, Lots 8.01, 10.01, and 36. Counselor?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for being out tonight. Stephen Hale, representing the applicant, 27 Westfield Avenue LLC. And first, I'd also like to thank the board professionals and Donna for sending your departmental comments and reports, which we will be prepared to address this evening. It's always helpful to get those reports and get good feedback from the municipality. So just by way of background, this is presently, again, the property, 2733 Westfield Avenue. Right now, it's improved with three separate buildings, two mixed-use buildings and a home. The property is within the DTV district, which permits what we're proposing. It's also part of a redevelopment plan that was adopted by, with the, with, I guess you got to be very close. Yeah, thanks. Which was a redevelopment plan that was adopted last year by the township, went obviously from township to the board and then back to the township. And what we're proposing this evening is very consistent with that redevelopment plan and the underlying zoning. What's proposed here is, again, a mixed-use building, 39 units, and our architect will explain that in more detail, but will also comply with the affordable housing requirements that are required, also complying with the EV charging requirements. And there will be a small retail slash restaurant, a small one, it's approximately 1,600 square feet. We will also be seeking, which is permitted under the redevelopment plan, we do comply with the parking for the residential component and actually have an excess, particularly when you factor in the credits they get for EV. And the redevelopment plan does allow for waiver for the retail restaurant. Again, it's small, it's only 1,500 square feet. So we feel that, again, a project, a great redevelopment project, I think you'll see based upon the plans that were prepared by our architect, have a nice rendering of the building also. Our engineer will address the engineering aspects of it, drainage, landscaping, lighting. We then have our traffic engineer to address any traffic circulation, parking, and our professional planner to address the few deviations slash waivers, variances that I articulated. So that's an overview of the project, Mr. Chairman, and if there's no preliminary questions, we're going to begin, if we could please, with our architect to take us through the building, and he'll also address the affordable. Okay. Like to call upon Miguel Martin. I think that one's on, I can check it. All right. Be sworn.
Please state your name and spell it.
Sure. Miguel Martin, M.I.G.U.E.L., M.A.R.T.I.N.
Please raise your right hand. Aye, Miguel.
Aye. Miguel Martin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will tell the truth.
That I will tell the truth.
At these proceedings.
At these proceedings.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, counsel. All right. Mr. Martin, if you could please begin with giving the board the benefit of work, educational experience, area of expertise, licenses you hold, and whether you've been accepted as a professional architect, licensed architect, in the state of New Jersey before their boards or courts.
Sure. I have a Bachelor's of Architecture from NJIT. I have a registered architect in the state of New Jersey since 2010. I've testified before numerous boards on similar applications, including...
Move to accept.
Second.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, so, Mr. Martin, if you could please give us an overview, as we'll touch on existing conditions, and then we can move on to what's proposed by way of improvements, and then we can touch on the review reports from the municipality. And I'll move away so you can take care of the screen.
So the application is for, first, to demolish the existing structures on the property. There is an existing, single-family dwelling on Lot 10.01, and an existing two-and-a-half story building on Lot 8.01, and the intent is to construct a new four-story mixed-use building consisting of three stories of residential apartments, over one story of parking and a commercial space. The residential portion consists of 39 rental apartments and divided up into 13 one-bedroom apartments, 14 two-bedroom apartments, and 12 three-bedroom apartments. There is an amenity space on each floor. So on the first floor, there's a 500-square-foot business center. On the second floor, there's a 500-square-foot gym, and the third floor, there's a 900-square-foot clubroom. In addition to these amenities, the applicant proposes an exterior rooftop deck that is optional. Each residential floor will have a finished ceiling of about nine feet. To meet the affordable housing requirement, the applicant is designating six apartments as affordable. Let me zoom in. The applicant is designating six apartments as affordable and consists of one one-bedroom apartment, three two-bedroom apartments, two three-bedroom apartments. The architectural plans have been highlighted on the various floors to designate the units that will be used as affordable housing. The affordable units will have the same finishes and treatments as the market units, there won't be a difference. The six affordable units meet and exceed the 15% required by the DTV zoning requirement. Moving on to the ground floor.
You're referring to an exhibit. Would you mark them, and so we can have some semblance of what you're talking about in the record?
No issue. The exhibit that I'm showing, that I'm displaying, is the architectural drawings, last revised January 22nd, 2024. These were previously submitted to the board and available to the public. I will be scrolling through. One, two, three, four, five, six.
When you refer to, you're referring to a sheet just identified as A1, or sheet 6, or however you want to do it?
Absolutely. So moving on to the ground floor, which is on sheet 810. An open parking garage is proposed with 69 parking spaces. A residential lobby is also proposed with frontage on Westfield Avenue, and with direct access to the parking lot. Immediately adjacent to the lobby is a 1,600-square-foot vanilla box commercial space, and will be prepared for either retail or restaurant use. In addition to the ground floor uses, the applicant also proposes an optional basement located under the retail restaurant area and the lobby. This space will be used for, will be used as a storage area and subdivided into storage cages for use by the building's tenants. The commercial space will have a ceiling of 14 feet, and the lobby will have a ceiling feet of, a ceiling height of about 10 feet. As previously indicated, the parking garage will contain 69 parking spaces. The redevelopment plan requires 1.75 spaces per apartment, which equals 68.25 spaces for 39 apartments. The parking layout is distributed in combination, in a combination of 30 tandem stalls and nine single-space stalls. This provides 39 stalls for the 39 residential apartments. Every apartment will have an off-street parking. As permitted by the redevelopment plan, a waiver is requested for the commercial parking requirement. In addition to the residential parking, the garage is provided with a short-term loading and unloading area for daily deliveries, including moving vans and trucks. The garage ceiling height will be 12 feet high to accommodate these vehicles, including the township's new ambulance. 12 dedicated EV charging spots and a bike rack will be provided in the garage. Now I'm displaying a rendering that we prepared. This was not provided as part of the architectural drawings.
I think the floor plans were, was A1. This would be A2.
So in the rendering, the exterior of the building will be a combination of brick masonry, fiber cement board, and plank siding, aluminum coping, and PVC trim. The color palette selected consists of shades of gray with a charcoal-black ribbon at the base of the building. A slate-black cornice is proposed along, along with black and white accent pieces throughout. The brick masonry veneer is limited to the elevation along the Westfield Avenue, frontage, and the balance of the elevations will be a combination of fiber cement siding. The overall building height will be 50 feet. The proposed styling materials and colors are consistent with the redevelopment plans requirements. Additionally, the building will be designed in accordance with all applicable codes for handicap accessibility. The project will comply with Americans with Disability Act, the Fair Housing Act, and New Jersey Barrier Free. Can I go on with the reports?
Yes, thank you. If you could now, yeah, address any items and reports that deal with architecture.
So starting with the engineer's report dated March 4th, 2024. Item... Item 2A. Regarding the adequacy of the tandem parking spaces as previously provided, as previously stated, 39 parking stalls in tandem and single-space configurations are proposed. The 30 tandem stalls will be reserved for the 26 multi-bedroom units, with four single-bedroom units receiving a tandem stall. Additionally, the applicant will have to develop a parking management plan that will meet the fluid needs of his tenants. Item 2B of the report, regarding the EV charging stations, the charging unit is graphically shown at the end of the parking stall. I'm just going to pull up the... Actually, I'll stick with the Exhibit A1, Sheet A10. So for example, the charging units are shown at the back wall of the parking spots. So in these spots over here, they're against this back wall, whereas, and these are sitting at the far end of the tandem spots, there's no requirement that these charging units have to be located there. One option is to locate those charging units on an intermediate column or on a side wall, so that there is no issue that they can reach. Well, in addition with a 25-foot charging cable, there shouldn't be an issue with any, you know, reaching either the far or the immediate parking spot. So effectively, we have two charging spots there. Additionally, with the, some of these providers, like ChargePoint, they can set up the charging station so that anyone can use it. So for example, if this, let's say if we use this column over here as an example, and there's a charging unit here, that charging unit can effectively charge a vehicle on any of the four spots. An EV vehicle does not need to be charged on a daily basis unless they're consuming 200, or driving 200 miles in a day. Otherwise, single-use spots are provided for those that do need an additional charge. We're proposing that this last spot over here would probably be a short-term parking spot for charging anybody who needs an additional charge. Regarding the, so now moving on to Item 3A, I'm sorry. 3A, B, C, and D, I'm going to defer to the site engineer, so I'll move on to Item 3A. This is regarding the EV charging station locations and the fire department's concern. There was an additional report provided by the fire department, and it was dated September 12th, 2023. And in this report, the fire chief, his recommendation, one was to reduce the number of EV charging spaces. Originally, we had 13. It's been reduced to 12. His, an additional request was is that to move the charging stations as close as possible to the entrance of the building. So that's the layout that we have. So those tandem spots, we have four that are immediately accessible from the driveway off of Westfield Ave, and then we have the additional five along the bottom side, and then one, so six total, off of Washington. In addition, the fire chief expressed concern over the fire suppression in the, in the building. The building is going to be designed to code, and that requires it to be, for an NFPA-13 full commercial sprinkler system to be provided over the parking garage. What is different between today's code and what was proposed probably a year or two ago is that NFPA-13 has been modified so that it increases the hazard level of parking. All parking garages, regardless if EV vehicles are in it or not, increases the hazard level so that additional coverage, sprinkler coverage is provided over the parking. Moving on to Item 4A of the report, of the engineer's report, all landscaping areas should include an irrigation system, absolutely. For B, the landscape design should be approved by the shade tree director. We have no issue with them providing us input. The, Item 5A is the affordable housing obligation. I've reviewed the requirements and the, that we're proposing six affordable units, which equals, which actually exceeds 15% of the required affordable. Moving on to the planner's report dated March 1st, 2024. Beginning with Item 2A. The minimum lot width on the, for the application ranges from 150 to 100 feet, where the redevelopment plan requires 125 feet minimum. The redevelopment specifically lists the lots that we're doing the improvement on. Unfortunately, that was an oversight in the, in the writing of the redevelopment plan. The owner, I believe, has reached out to neighboring properties to see if he can expand the project, but unfortunately, those properties are not for sale. Moving on to Item B, 2B. To permit a maximum impervious coverage of 96.06%. With this, we will comply and reduce our coverage to be below 96%. And to provide that, we have to accommodate that, there is a series of locations where we propose concrete surfaces that can be landscaped. So one is the bike rack area, showing on drawing A10 of Exhibit A. The bike rack area is shown with a concrete surface. We can move the bike rack over a bit so it's easier, easily accessible from the drive aisle, and then remove some of that concrete and install additional landscaping. The other space behind this stair tower is not accessible and can be completely removed to increase, to reduce our coverage requirement. So moving on to Item 2C. This is regarding the 69 off-street parking spaces where, where between 67 and 89 spaces are required. So here, we're requesting a waiver, a waiver in accordance with the redevelopment plan to omit the commercial parking requirement. The, if we base the parking requirement solely on the residential, the residential number, we would need 69 parking spaces, and because we're providing the electrical vehicles, we get to reduce it by another six to seven spots, so we actually would have a surplus of parking for the residential component. Item 2D. For not providing a detailed landscape, hardscape plan, here, we're requesting a waiver because... For not providing a detailed landscape, hardscape plan, here, the, we're requesting a waiver because the the minimal amount of landscaping around the the property, we felt there wasn't necessary to hire to get a landscape architect involved, considering that much of this is is basically low-coverage plantings. Moving on to 2D, no, 2E. For not providing street trees in accordance with Section the Section 195-209 of the Township Code. Here, we're trying to comply with the requirements, so we are proposing two new shade trees along Westfield Avenue. There's an existing shade tree located already in Westfield Avenue in front of the property. Along Washington, we're proposing a new shade tree. And then, I believe, there's an existing tree already in front of the property along Washington. Item 2F. Again, this is another waiver. This is for the five-foot-wide sidewalk in the back. Originally, we did have a 10-foot sidewalk to comply with the redevelopment plan, but after discussion, discussions with Mr. Ricky, we we all agreed that, considering the residential feel of Washington Street, that a five-foot sidewalk is more appropriate. Item 3A. The applicant should cut, should clarify whether the affordable units will contain the same interior finishes as the market units. That was provided in my previous testimony, that yes, we will provide the same finishes and treatments as market units. There won't be any difference. Item 3C. While the architectural plans depict a building height of 49.5 feet and the engineering plans depict 50 feet, we ask that the building height be verified in accordance with the above definition. The architectural plans have been revised, so pointing to Sheet. Sheet 8, A20. The exterior elevation, front elevation has been revised to indicate a building height of 50 feet to be consistent with the site engineer's drawings.
Mr. Martin, I believe it's it's a non-issue, but I believe he may have changed the, back to 49.5, maybe off one of your previous drawings, so. It's it's a non-issue. We're just looking for consistency.
No problem. Item 4A. The architectural plans now depict an optional 3,800-square-foot amenity deck on the rooftop. That is correct. The the rooftop would be used specifically for the tenants of the building. Item 4A, I'm sorry, 5A. As previously discussed, we're requesting the waiver for the the commercial parking. If we provide the parking simply on the on the residential requirement, we would be required 69, I'm sorry, yes, 69 spots with the EV credit. That would put us down six or seven spots of of surplus. So, now we're moving on to Item 5B.
Before you leave 5A, I think the comment included a lot more more detailed response as to how you're going to meet the the commercial part of it. And and that would depend on hours of operation and things of that nature. Are you going to address that, or is someone else going to?
So, what I'll, what I'll address is that the the 1,600-square-foot commercial space. If we, based on my experience in designing, if it was to be a restaurant, a 1,600-square-foot space, half of that roughly would be back-of-house space, so a kitchen, bathrooms, circulation. So, you're probably looking at roughly 40 people at most to use the, to use that that space. So, if you base that, using that number. So, if I used 1,600 square feet, using the parking requirement of 1 over 50, one spot for every 50 square feet, 32 spaces would be required. Assuming that two occupants are per car, that would be 64 people to visit the restaurant. I would not be able to see not, probably not even close to 40 people in the restaurant. So, I feel that that parking requirement is a little bit stringent. So, if we were to halve that, I believe the our traffic engineer might be able to, I believe he has done some calculation on, based on the his traffic assessment, that there's additional parking available on the street to accommodate that use.
Using your logic of 40 people only fitting in there or less, that's still, and you're saying two per car, that's still 20 vehicles.
It's 20 vehicles, but we have also, if we.
And off-street parking is not accountable for complying with the regulations.
Well, the the residential component, the residential component, we are in compliance. And the redevelopment plan does permit a waiver on that requirement, on the commercial parking requirement, provided that there's off-street parking, I mean, on-street parking, and other means for the for the use.
Lot of spots, yeah.
There will be additional testimony on that, on that item.
Including hours of operation and what type of restaurant, whether it's a breakfast, lunch, dinner, kind of.
The applicant is not proposing the use. We're just setting it up as a vanilla box. It could be retail. It could be some kind of a food establishment. The applicant is not determining what that use is right now.
I have a quick question. The middle, the middle section, the 27, it it looks to me there's an extra floor. I'm assuming that's for the elevator. It's just my clarification.
So, on the, on the elevation that the, correct, that's the stair tower and the elevator lobby to access the the rooftop. Now, if the rooftop does not get constructed, those pieces would be lowered.
Wouldn't they count towards the height of the building, then?
And houses, including the stair and the elevator tower are excluded from the building height.
Is that correct, Mr. Ricky?
I'm I'm sorry. I was having a sidebar conversation with Mr. Cruz. And what, can you just repeat your question, please?
The question was, we were talking about the section of the building above the number that goes beyond the 50 feet, and it was explained to be part of the staircase to the roof, elevator equipment, I guess.
Yes, that's that's my understanding. That's a permissible exception under the, under the code.
All right, thank you.
So, moving on to 5B. Two spaces or 2.89% of the parking spaces are now depict, are now depicted as compact spaces. The project is in compliance with the redevelopment plan. Item 5C. Parking, the applicant agreed to this requirement at a technical review meeting. This is regarding that the, that the, that the parking for the tenant is included in their rent. There will not be an additional fee to parking under the building. Item 5D. The site plan now depicts the commercial area as either restaurant or retail. We know that the proposed 1,600-square-foot feet of space is relatively modest, as previously stated before. The 1,600 square feet, if if it's, whether it's retail or or a restaurant, is is on the smaller side for for those establishments. Item 5E. Clarify the tandem parking, how it will work with the 13 one-bedroom units. I stated before that the, there will be 30 tandem stalls where there is, I believe I said 26. Yes, where, when there's 26 multi-bedroom units, that will take priority to those tandem stalls. So, that will leave four single-bedroom units with a, with a tandem stall. We do not see an issue. Some people have two cars. Item 5F. The applicant now proposes two single-use electrical vehicle charging locations. This is to help address the issue with having all the electrical, all the electrical charging stations in a tandem spot. The single-use spots would be used for whomever, you know, would need a a charge and not parking in a tandem spot. Item 5G. Continuing comment. So, this is regarding the 24-foot-wide driveway. I'm going to defer some of that, this testimony, over to the site engineer and traffic engineer. However, the the building opening itself, including the wrapping of the brick into the into the driveway, that building, the the opening is 28 feet. So, it's four feet wider than than the driveway requirement. Item 5H, support columns. The comment was addressed. Item 5, 5I. The comment was addressed. This is regarding the ceiling height in the garage, that we are not proposing a 12-foot ceiling in the garage to accommodate delivery vehicle, moving vans, and the township's ambulance. Item 5J. This is regarding the temporary loading and unloading area that we're proposing in the parking garage. Now, if I scroll over to Sheet A10 again. So, we're proposing a loading and unloading area that would be used for for move-ins, daily deliveries, including delivery trucks. In the event there's an emergency vehicle, like an ambulance, has to enter, we're providing the space underneath the 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 building to accommodate them. The site engineer has provided a a sign that indicates that no parking, loading, and unloading will be provided at the spot, and I'll let him point that out on his drawings.
If I may just say one thing, most of the comments in in the letter are addressed. I I show a progression over time in the letter where it starts out, and there's a question, and this is the third reiteration of the letter, and the applicant has has really addressed most of the comments. I'm not sure if the board wants to go through the address comments or just anything remaining, but I don't delete them. I show the progression that it shows that you've made changes over time. So, I just wanted to state that for the record.
Okay, so skipping over addressed comments. The, the next one would be Item 6B regarding the sidewalks. Again, we're requesting a waiver, as previously stated, because originally, we had proposed a 10-foot sidewalk to comply with the redevelopment redevelopment plan, and it was it was, after discussions with Mr. Ricky, we and we felt it was appropriate to reduce the width of the sidewalk to to be consistent with the residential neighborhood in the back. The next item, 6C. Regarding coordinating the project's streetscape with the project across the street, the proposed redevelopment across the street, we agreed to comply. The applicant, the site, the site drawings have been revised to indicate that note. Skipping over D, skipping over 5E. Going to Architectural's, Item 7A1. This is regarding the the side wall covering the, shielding the the parking garage. Originally, we proposed 10 feet. We reduced the, the, the height of the wall to to six feet, so that falls in line with the requirements for a fence. The applicant proposes two options as far as a solid masonry wall. I'm scrolling over to Sheet A20 of the submitted architectural plans. One option is a a pier-fence combination, and the other option is a solid, a solid wall. The the actual option selected is going to be determined on the construction budget, but at a minimum, you would be provided with a short brick wall with a fence on top and piers in between. Moving on to Item 7A2. The idea of so this comment is relating to trying to coordinate the the architecture with the application across the street. The the whole idea is to be unique, to stand out, so that the, in in the best interest of the applicant, to try and coordinate with the application across the street, it would be more inappropriate. The applicant is proposing more of a modern-looking building. The application across the street is is more of a traditional-looking style with gables, red brick, and white trim and cornices. Whereas, we're taking the approach of more of a modern-looking building. The other thing I want to point out, that application was was approved about four or five years ago, and work on that project has not begun. So, my applicant is in the process in of of getting construction estimates and preparing construction documents, so he's looking to move as soon as possible and construct the building. Item 7A3. HVAC penetrations. We are not proposing any large HVAC penetrations on the exterior of the building. All HVAC condensers would be located on the, on the proposed flat roof. Any penetrations that you might see would be located in the in the recessed balconies, and those are going to be probably four-inch diameter penetrations for exhaust and launch, for the dryer exhaust and bathroom exhaust. Item 7B, building materials. So, the the material selected, as stated before, is going to be a combination of masonry with fiber cement siding. Masonry brick with fiber cement siding. I did bring a sample palette here to to show the board. However, I my intent, or the, you know, our intent was always to install a, construct a mock wall at the site because that's really the best way to look at these materials. Item 7B. I'm sorry, we went over that one. 7C, common address. 7D, signage, common address.
Excuse me, did you say you you brought an exhibit to to show? Maybe you wanted to share that, let the board touch it, maybe pass it, pass it around, or?
It's kind of heavy. It's kind of heavy. I'll put it up.
Counsel, I assume we can mark that as A3 then?
Well, I'll just hold it first, okay? And then I'll move around too, so everyone can see it. So this is the brick that would be at the... So the brick on the bottom is the, this is the brick on the bottom, which is a blackish brick. That's the base. I'm going to pull up also the rendering, so you can follow along. There's a black base. Then we have a prefabricated ribbon that's going to go above that. This is basically a prefabricated brick by Shoal Dice. This is another, this is the field brick that's going to go throughout the front of the building. Then we have the slate black that's going to be the cornice at the top. The panel siding, the gray for the panel siding, and then any white PVC trim that you see in the rendering.
Okay, so the panels are a lot lighter than they really appear on the graphic?
That is correct. So moving on to 7E. So we addressed Mr. Ricky's concerns. So we dressed up the openings into the garage, so we added the grates at the bottom of the opening, and then I added some storefront paneling at the top, so that it looked more consistent with the storefront at the rest of the building. Item 7F. The balconies. The tenant, the landlord, will provide a lease restriction and enforcement to ensure that no storage of household goods or anything like that are on the balcony, and they're kept nice and clean. Item 7G. Rain gutters. They're going to be located internally. There won't be any visible on the exterior of the building. Switching back over to the architectural plan. So if I, this one, this is the top floor, sheet A13. We have a trash room on every floor that's going to be able to store a couple of bins in there, and there is going to be a chute where trash is going to be sent down to a trash room on the lowest floor. Trash will be collected in bins in the trash room in the ground floor and hauled out as needed on a schedule determined by the applicant. I believe that completes the letter.
Thank you very much. I have no further preliminary questions of Mr. Morton at this time.
All the affordable units are grouped together, are shown grouped together. If there's no difference in the finishes, why are you segregating them as you're showing that?
Well, they're actually distributed among three floors.
But they're all grouped in one corner.
That's really for ease of construction, because the units just stack.
But a three-bedroom units is a three-bedroom unit, and your, the six affordable units are going to be spread out between all the units. So you didn't have to put the one-bedroom unit in that corner. It could be distributed through the building. Just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I have no issue with indicating, so that one is a unit 1C. I can indicate another, a different unit as being affordable. So that way, it's not, they're all located in the same corner.
As we discussed earlier, you said all the spots are for the apartments, the 39 units, and that adds up to the tandem and singles. And a waiver can be given, if so deemed by the board, for on-street parking. Have you, do you have a plan presented that will show us that there's 20 spots on-street that are available?
So the site engineer, we have a site engineer and a traffic engineer that will provide additional information for that.
No, the EVs are only for the building, correct?
That is correct.
With less than 1% of vehicles on the road today, EVs, is it the plan to only rent to people that own EVs then?
Are you stating that we have too many EV chargers?
Just asking for...
Isn't it a state law that you have to have so many per lot now?
That's correct. I believe it's 15%.
Yeah, it's a state rich. You done the number off the top here? It's a state law, Mr. Chairman, that you have to have so many and so many parking lots?
I realize that, but it's not on, like we just approved for the new MEDI Center. It's kind of an open parking lot. Anybody could access those spots. These are going to be specific to the people in the building. It just seems that if a person gets the spot with an EV and doesn't have an EV, it just doesn't make sense to give a credit or to be installing it.
So the configuration of the parking is what I guess I'm saying. We're being asked to accommodate this configuration of the stalls, the double stalls, and the EV units. That's probably not, just seems like a concession that we have to make.
Coach, the tandem spaces were part of the original redevelopment plan concept that was developed, and the state ordinance itself mandates the amount of EV spaces that need to go in by virtue of the applicant, and I believe their traffic consultant is going to provide some testimony. But the EV spaces are essentially effective as a driveway would be, that someone with two vehicles would have access to an EV in their own driveway.
Mr. Connor, you're saying that the stacking is part of our affordable housing plan?
It was part of our redevelopment plan for this application, yes.
Which was developed years before the requirement of the mandate for the EV, so the two don't really mix together. You're saying we have the stacking allowed. A few years later, the government says you have to put in EV stations, and right now, you're saying that two don't really mesh in my mind. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
They're providing the minimum number of EV spots required by the law, and they anticipate managing their usage, that tenants that have EVs would be able to be assigned to those particular spaces.
That's my question, though. Is every apartment going to have, or every townhouse, whatever it is, are they going to have their own assigned spots? Or anybody can park anywhere in the slot as long as you live in that building?
What they've been saying is that the multi-bedroom units are going to be assigned to the tandem spots, 26 of them. Four of the one-bedroom spots will be assigned to the other four tandem spots, and the balance of the units will be assigned to a single parking spot.
One last EV question. You said that the station next to Washington Avenue might, would probably be used as a short-term flexible unit, flexible station. That would eliminate one of the units getting a parking spot. Were you just saying things, or?
So the, just a reminder, the parking requirement is 69. We're allowed to have a credit of 10%, which reduces the amount by six or seven spots. We technically have a surplus of seven. However, the likelihood of the applicant having full 100% occupancy is unlikely, so that's why we picked that one spot all the way at the end of the driveway to be. And if it needs to be 100%, you know, assigned, if it has to be assigned to an apartment to meet the, so that ensure that everyone has a parking spot, absolutely, that would be assigned. Remember, the applicant will have to prepare a parking management plan that he has to adjust to accommodate the needs of his tenant.
Yeah, I also have a question regarding the EV as well. Some of them were already asked, and that is around the fact that the tandem spots, if you have for the two- and three-bedroom apartment, if, you know, if someone has two cars and they decide to leave one of the cars in that spot, then that essentially leaves that EV, you know, unavailable to anyone else. So I think back, maybe I didn't hear the answer, but back to the original question is, are the parking spots assigned, or is it to, based on the apartment or the tenant, or is it anywhere, anyone can park wherever they want?
So it's going to be assigned based on the management plan that the landlord will have to create. Now, to address the issue with reaching the actual charger in the event someone does park in front, I own an EV. I've been using it for over a year. My wife parks in front. Sometimes I have to park in the back. That 25-foot charging cable gets to my car without an issue. Additionally, where we can, we have columns and we have side walls. We will move the chargers so that they're more in between the front and back tandem spots, so that way, there is no issue to reach those vehicles.
Board members have any other questions? This witness?
Mr. Chairman, just one other thing on the EV. I'm Jay Troutman, the traffic engineer for the board. They also allow a phase-in with those, so if we're not, if we don't have a lot of EV at the beginning, they really only have to build four of the 12, and then after a certain amount of time, the next 5% another four, and then further out in time, the last four. So they can adjust to the, if they end up with a situation where there's not a lot of EV demand. The only requirement is that they have 12 make-ready spaces, meaning they have to be wired, but they don't have to have chargers all at once.
Board has no further questions. Open up to the public for any questions for this witness's testimony only. If you have general comments, that can come at the end of this session. Do you have a motion to open up to the public?
Motion.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Nate. Anyone from the public wishing to come forward? Please do so. State your name and address.
Hi, Linda Marhol, 34, Washington Street. I live adjacent, obviously, to the building development. You spoke about planting trees on Washington Street. The first tree is existing. I understand that it's on 26. Me being on 34, where is that second tree going to go? Is it on your property, my property?
The requirement is for the tree to be located in front of the project, so the tree, if I show you here, I'm not sure what the address is on this side, but you can see, but that's your property on this side. So this line here is the edge of the property line. The tree is right here, the shade tree.
Okay.
So it's in front of the property.
Okay. You talked about sidewalks as well. Is there going to be a sidewalk on Washington Street?
There's going to be a sidewalk from property line to property line that's five foot wide.
Okay. You also spoke about parking on demand, on what the client or the tenants are going to require, residents?
So the residential parking, we're going to provide 100% coverage on off-street parking, so the tenants themselves will not need to park on the street.
Okay, well, most town, most house owners or renters have two-plus cars. You have four-bedroom apartments. What happens when four cars go? You can't park now on Washington Street because of the apartments and the existing businesses on the opposite end. I struggle daily, there's cars parked every day in front of my house. Where are the other cars going to park when there's a four-vehicle resident?
Understood. So the parking requirement is established by, by an anticipation of having that kind of a need? So will we need, will we ever occupy at any given time at once 69 spots? It's very unlikely, because that's the whole, the whole idea by using that parking requirement is so that we provide more than enough parking for the tenants.
Mr. Morton?
Okay, well, three bedrooms, so three cars. Okay, oh, sorry about that, with the three cars. And, you know, part of the concerns with the off-street park, or off-premise parking on-street, oops, I'm sorry. You say you need 20 spaces. There's not 20 spaces on Washington Street that are available for parking.
Ma'am, the testimony that you're asking of this witness is probably, the questions are better asked of their traffic consultant.
Okay.
Will appear a little later.
Okay, I'll hold that question then. The garbage dumpsters that you spoke about, where will the existing retail, or potential retail customers, where are they going to put their garbage? Is that going to go down the garbage chutes as well that are inside the building?
So the trash room is accessible from the ground floor. They would have access to it, and they would put their trash in there as well.
Okay, and are they going to be dumpsters?
They would be in carts. So there are carts where the trash goes into, and then the, since it's a private contractor, that the carts away the trash, that the vehicle will either pull up underneath the vehicle, underneath the building and take the garbage immediately from the trash room. It's unlikely that you'll ever see the trash. There's no, there shouldn't be any reason to see a cart or any bins or anything like that on the street.
Okay, because right now, there's, not your issue, but there's garbage that get picked up, and I hear those garbage dumpsters. So my concern was what types of dumpsters are going to be there.
It's not going to be the traditional dumpster that you're thinking about, where it comes, you know, truck comes and lifts it. It's going to be a cart.
Okay, okay.
It looks more like a laundry cart.
Okay, and I think most of my other questions will be later on for traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward. Please, name and address.
45 Washington Street. I was just wondering if you had an artist rendering of what it will look like from Washington Street. We saw the front of the building. We didn't see the back of it.
I do not have a rendering, but I could offer you the architectural drawing. So on the architectural drawings, I have sheet A21, which is, depicts the rear elevation from Washington Avenue.
When I look out my window, that's what I'll see?
Well, this is not showing the landscaping. There is going to be some landscaping under here, but correct, this is what you'll see from Washington.
Anyone else from the public?
Okay, so you're saying that you have enough...
Please state your name and...
Excuse me. Please, Nate. Name and address. Susan Ray, 11 Washington Street, 11. You're saying there's enough parking for every resident for two cars in that building?
Not for two cars, for one and three-quarter cars.
So there's no on-street parking?
Not for the residential component. We meet the requirement of the redevelopment plan, which is one and three-quarter cars per apartment.
Okay, because Washington Street is dangerous now. We have parking for people that come from railway businesses, from the electric company on Westfield Avenue. We have the people on Westfield Avenue parking in the back. We got tractor trailers coming up the street for the business across the street, and the parking is awful. The residents, I said, you're going to take your life in your hands getting out of the driveway with the speeders.
Excuse me, ma'am, this would be a testimony. You could state anything you like at the end. This is only for questions for the architect.
Well, the thing is, there's a lot of heavy traffic that come. We're a detour street also. So when Westfield Avenue is closed, we got the traffic going both ways. So when Westfield Avenue is closed, we got the traffic going both ways, and there's a lot of obstruction in the way when the cars are parked all along the curb to come out of the lots. We've already had accidents.
I'm correct. They're not going to, they're not going to be coming out onto Washington Street.
There's no exit?
No, am I correct?
No, there's an exit.
So it's just in and out of the front?
It's in and out of the front, correct? There's going to be one on Washington now, okay. I'm sorry, I read it wrong.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a parking problem. There's a speed limit problem on that street, because they go 35 and up...
I don't mean to interrupt you, but these are questions for the architect. So if you have a question, that's good.
Well, that's part of it, because they're coming out of their driveway, and there's obstruction with the cars that are parked on the street now. And the businesses in Rowway, and the businesses on Westfield Avenue.
The applicant has not introduced their testimony about their parking demand, their traffic circulation. They have a consultant who's going to be presenting that testimony after this. This is the architect for the project, and where you're asking questions that aren't in his wheelhouse, so to speak.
I'm just saying, there's issues on Washington Street with parking. And if you have other people in this building parking on that street, and retail businesses parking, and employees parking, it's going to, it's, and it's a detour street, it's a mess now.
Shh, folks, folks, shh. We can't hear her, shh, please.
So, that's my concern.
Well, come back when the traffic engineer has testimony, and you can ask specific questions. He's coming next. Okay. Please come forward, name and address.
Foxpazian, 15 Washington Street. I'm just curious, will the sewer system handle all of this?
That's really a question for the site engineer.
Yeah, well, and isn't this going to lower property value on all our houses on the street with this monstrosity, where there used to be two homes? And parking, I mean, this guy's going to get beat up. Not physically, but. Our road sucks, and you're going to make it 10 times worse. Sewer system, I worry, because...
The sewer system, sir, the sewer system, they have the sewer rights from the Roway Valley Sewage.
Four floors.
No, 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 okay, maybe we got to get to this part now, if I can, Mr. Chairman. I know what you're here for, I understand.
No, I know.
Okay, first off, they have the sewer rights to the Roway Valley Sewage. It will accommodate it, because obviously, we cannot let them build something that won't accommodate sewage. The other thing is the mayor of the town, I must get this clear right out in the open. I know why you're here, and I understand your concerns, and I don't disagree with you. I've talked about this in 2017 at an open public meeting at the high school. These projects are mandated by the state of New Jersey through court order. Let's understand, this or something very similar like this is going there. Let's understand that, it's going to happen. We have an affordable housing obligation to meet, not by me and the township council, by your friends in Trenton, the governor, and the senate legislature down there. It's not a Clark problem. April 17th, 2017, go to our website, watch the presentation of the Affordable Housing Town Meeting we had at Arthur Johnson High School, where we said, this is going to happen. Look around you, in every community around, so we can say, excuse me, if I can finish, maybe I'm going to answer questions that are going to come back and forth 100 times tonight. I'm not in love with this, but I've got to accept this, because we have no choice but to accept this type of project in this town. If it was up to me, I wouldn't build any of this stuff in Clark, if it was up to me. It's not up to me, it's up to a court mandate through the state of New Jersey. The towns were sued, we had to come up with an affordable housing plan. In 2025, we're going to recheck our plan to see where we're going, to see if we're on track, or they're going to add more. Look at Cranford, look at Garwood, look at Westfield, look at Rowway. I get it, I'm not saying you're wrong, and I'm not saying your feelings are being disregarded, but understand, it's not going to be what it was there, ever again. So it's going to be this project or something damn close to it. And you're going to be back here in a month from now, or six months from now, or a year from now, with the same exact questions of, can the sewage handle it? Yes, it can. That's done. It can handle, Mr. Engineer, can the sewage handle it?
Yes.
Okay, that puts that question to bed. There's no anticipation. It can or it can't? It can. The sewage can handle it, we know that for a fact. That's, because he works with the Roway... Okay, the sewage can handle it, we're going to allow, we're going to allow feces and urine to flow down the street of Clark Township. That makes a lot of sense.
But they dump?
Oh, here we go. The sewage can handle it, the Roway Valley Sewage Authority would not allow us to even discuss this project if they didn't have the flow rights in the pipe to handle the project. That is a fact.
We have, next up will be our civil engineer, which will address the comments of...
Just because the state is doing it, doesn't mean it's right.
We agree. Keep voting blue.
All right, we, we have our civil engineer next, will truly answer and respond to the municipal engineers' comments on sewage.
Anyone else from the public wish to come forward to ask questions? The architect's testimony. State your name and address.
Nick Pacella, property manager for the condos at 10 to 20 Washington. Correct me if I'm wrong, the building that's currently at 22 Washington is staying. That's not part of this project.
That's a single-family home? Yes.
Correct. And you mentioned a single-family house going into your project as well. Could you talk more about the square footage of that house? What would that look like? Can we see a picture of it?
No, it's not going into the project, it's being removed.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's being demolished.
So the, so your, your property will just go...
If you're, I believe that is 26 Washington.
Which is part of your project.
Yes, so the property shape is an L going there.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Being known else coming forward, motion to close to the public?
Motion.
Thank you, Nate. Thank you, Mike, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Board members, I'd like to now call upon our civil engineer, Adnan Khan.
Please state your full name and spell it, please.
Adnan Khan, A-D-N-A-N-K-H-A-N.
Please raise your right hand. I, Adnan Khan.
I, Adnan Khan.
Do here solemnly swear.
Salomon swear.
That I, that you will faithfully taste, tell the truth in this proceeding, so help God.
I'll tell the truth in these proceedings, to help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. All right, Mr. Khan, as did Gal, if you could please give the board the benefit of your work, educational experience, area of expertise, license you hold, and whether you've been accepted as a professional engineer before their boards or courts of the state of New Jersey.
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, master's degree in construction management from NJIT, testified in federal court, superior court, and hundreds of boards throughout New Jersey.
Make a motion to accept.
Tab, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
All right, great, appreciate it. Right, Mr. Khan, if you could take the board through, again, existing site conditions, move on to site improvements, and then we can address the engineering comments related to stormwater sewage and...
Sure. So as a design engineer or the project engineer, we prepared the plans for this project, civil, civil plans, and the plans that are in front of you, I'm going to give you the date, they are the exact same copy of the plans that were submitted earlier to the board, and they are dated January 11th, 2024. And it comprises of, let's see, 10 sheets. Eight of them are civil sheets, and last two sheets, sheet number nine and 10, are the soil erosion permit application plans. The cover sheet that we have, I'm just going to quickly go over, as Mr. Martin made my job much easier today, going over in detail about the site layout. But again, we are requesting, it's in a redevelopment zone, the project. We, it's conforming, except for few exceptions and few variances that we are looking for. One of the variants, as Mr. Martin mentioned, is the lot coverage, where we are exceeding by 0.06%, and we have identified the areas where we can gain up more pervious to eliminate that variance. So that's something that we are planning to do. Sheet C-02 of the plan depicts the existing conditions, or, yeah, or the survey with the, with the demolition plan, what we are proposing.
This is going to be A5 as an exhibit, is that correct, the site plan?
Yes, if you can mark it as, but they are the exact same copy of the plans that were submitted before. So the site comprises of three lots, and it's a true lot, which basically runs through Westfield Avenue in the north and to the south onto Washington Street. The width, the width of the lot along Washington Street is about 100 feet, whereas the width along Westfield Avenue is 140, I believe, 150 feet. So it's an L shape, roughly an L-shaped lot, which has multiple structures, asphalt pavement areas. So the lot coverage, the existing lot coverage is about 84% on the, on the property as currently exists. And again, we are increasing that lot coverage to 96%. However, like, again, we are adding more landscaping and lighting, as Mr. Martin mentioned, and I'm going to go over to as I go along. So the proposal for the project is, again, like, let me just zoom this. As I mentioned, that this is a true lot from Westfield and Washington, so we are proposing a full access driveways on both Westfield Avenue as well as on Washington Street. So the car can come in and go out using either of the driveways. The parking, as Mr. Martin already mentioned, we are proposing 69 parking spaces, 68 points some is required with the EV credit. We have further net residential about seven spaces over than what we required, but again, I will leave it to our traffic engineer to explain it in more detail. As far as the improvements, again, we are proposing 69 spaces, 30 of them are tandem spaces. The parking to the west, all are tandem, except for one space by Washington Street. Similarly, the property line to the east comprises of tandem spaces. Total number of tandem spaces are 30, times two, which is 60. And then we have individual, nine individual parking spaces. We have a loading and loading area, and this will be used for move-ins, move-outs, deliveries, and things of that nature. Believe, what else? And again, like, as far as the sidewalks, we talked about, Washington Street currently doesn't have any sidewalk throughout the street. What we are proposing is a five-foot-wide sidewalk as well as new curbing. There is an existing curb exist, but it's in a very, very disrepair. So we are proposing new curb and new sidewalk, and one of the variants we are seeking is the width of the sidewalk, which, as Mr. Ritchie as well as Mr. Martin mentioned, is based on our discussion during the TRC meeting, that instead of providing a 10-foot, it's better to have a five-foot sidewalk on Washington, plus some green strip for landscaping. And that's what we are proposing, a shade tree along Washington Street. There are two other shade trees, one in front of our property existing, which is going to remain. So totally, there will be two shade trees as part, in front of our property on Washington. And the same thing, we are proposing two shade trees along Westfield Avenue. Then we are also proposing some grading and drainage improvements. The site, as it currently exists, is very flat site. It is actually, has depressed areas in between, which basically collects the water as like our pond, the water on the side. So what we are utilizing is we are trying to create some slope to have a better, or channelize better the stormwater runoff from the project, as well as the grading improvements to provide a safe and secure circulation, along with the ADA accessibility requirements for the parking spaces and accessibility to the building. We did a detailed stormwater management analysis of the area, and we provided that report to Grotto Engineering, and we had extensive conversation on that, and we finally designed a project where we also did an investigation, not just for the side runoff, but also the capacities, capacity of the stormwater runoff on the street, whether any additional runoff that we are going to generate can handle the additional runoff. And we provided all that backup data and calculations confirming that the township system has adequate capacity, that this slight increase in the impervious coverage won't have any negative effects on the overall stormwater for this property, adjacent properties, and the roadway network around it. We are also proposing lighting improvements. Again, all lights that we are proposing will be LED, very efficient lighting. On, under the building, in the parking area, there will be all ceiling-mounted light fixtures. As I mentioned, full cutoff downward throw light fixtures, so there is minimum glow or minimum spillage, and we are meeting the requirements of the township, as far as the requirement for lighting up the area for the parking and traffic circulation. In addition to this lighting for the parking, there will be some decorative lighting on the facade of the building along Westfield Avenue. And again, these are also like very low illumination type, it's mostly, mostly to enhance the facade of the, this beautiful building that's going to go in that area. What else? I think that's pretty much it. And again, yeah, we talked about landscaping, again, as I mentioned earlier, that... So, yeah, so again, let me get back my train of thought. Also, the impervious coverage, yes, we are slightly over, as I mentioned, and Mr. Martin mentioned, that we have a couple of areas where we feel very comfortable that we can bring the impervious coverage down to 96%, which is permitted in this redevelopment zone. So we will be in compliance with that requirement.
And then, again, I know you've worked extensively with the, with Mr. O'Connor. Any problem complying with any of those terms and conditions?
No, I don't see any issues. I think we can comply with all the comments, and we agree this project will trigger, and I think that piggybacks, can I go ahead?
Yes, address again the...
So, yeah, if I can piggyback to, like, this project, again, as per the DEP requirements, any project that generates more than 8,000 gallons per day of sewer, additional sewer, require an automatic NJDEPTWA, what's called Treatment Works approval. So the permit has to go to DEP. Again, there is a, it's a three-phase or three-step process. First, it has to go to the town utility, they have to sign off on it, then it goes to the purveyor, which will be Ritten Valley in this case, they have to sign off on it. Then it goes to DEP, and DEP has us to ultimately sign off on it before any sewer connections or any permit will be issued. And this project, again, the sewage area map, it is designated an NJDEP sewage area map, and it has the capacity to handle the flow from projects like this. And again, as I mentioned, it will go through that process to go to DEP to ultimately get an NJDEP sewer permit.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Chairman, no further questions of our civil engineer at this point?
In one of the correspondence, I saw a reference that it was your obligation to buy any additional flow rights. Is that, was that needed, or?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Flow rights.
Fall rights?
Flow rights to the...
Oh, flow right. Again, yeah, if it needed, the applicant will comply with that.
Can, the original stormwater was for recharge, but then the realization of our clay soil became apparent, and then it was onsite storage. Are you saying there's no onsite storage anymore?
We have conveyance pipes that will store some of the pipe before their discharge in... into the existing stormwater system. So there is some storage within the pipes that will run throughout the property. But you're right, the soils in the area are not conducive to permeability, so even if you put some kind of a system, it's not going to work.
So your storage would have a smaller diameter pipe exiting it to keep the time of concentration similar to what the existing conditions are now?
That is correct. And again, and we also did the capacity analysis of the existing system, and we showed that the existing system, system has more than adequate capacity to handle the additional runoff.
So following DEP regulations and local ordinances, there will be no increase of stormwater leaving the site?
It, slight increase, but it will be handled within the stormwater system. And again, there will be storage, as I said, like...
There's a slight increase, but it's not leaving the site at an increased rate?
That's right.
Mr. Koch, the applicant has submitted calculations that are in accordance with township ordinances and NJDEP requirements, but this is not a major development application, and as such, there's no requirement that they reduce the volume or the quantity of runoff from the project. And as the applicant has stated, there was already in excess of 86% of the property was already impervious coverage, so there's a very tiny increase that they anticipate. And they've shown that the existing storm sewer on both Westfield Avenue and on Washington Street can accommodate that additional runoff.
Thank you for that. I was just bringing that point out because that's a concern that has been brought up, and it seems like that has been addressed. Anyone else on the board have any questions for the engineer? Seeing none, I'd like a motion to open this to the public. Thank you, Nate.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody, Mike, thank you. Anybody from the public wishing to ask questions of the engineer on his testimony, his testimony only? General comments can be made at the end of the session. Please come forward, say your name and address again.
I'm DeMar Hall, 34 Washington Street. You spoke about doing the studies on the sewer being able to handle the upcoming with 39 new tenants coming into the facility. My concern, oops, I'm sorry. My concern is I know that DPW, and they do a great job, come by monthly to monitor the sewer situation. In fact, the don't put no wipes in the pipes, truck was there today in front of my house. So obviously, there's some concerns. So if the current, there's current concerns based on the residents today, how do we know that adding all of these apartments, obviously are going to increase usage, that those pipes really can, and that DPW is not going to have to or have to come more often to maintain those pipes?
Actually, there is a whole process that goes into designing the sewer system, and that's what we're going to do. We have, we have, actually, on our plans, we have calculations, how much flow we are generating, and as I mentioned, it's about 8,700 gallons per day. There is a requirement, as an engineer, there are standards that we have to follow in order to design that sewer, the lateral connection. Then the obligation is for the purveyor to give us an okay to connect it, because they are allocated certain sewer discharge by DEP. That's called service area mapping, through service area mapping. So if, if, once we go, and that's the, that's the reason there's this three-step process that I mentioned to get the TWA permit. It goes to the town first, the town will say if their infrastructure is okay, and they can, I mean, they can convey to the Reddington Valley. Then it goes to Reddington Valley, and they will see if they have the capacity and the authority from DEP to accept this additional sewer waste that's going to come to their system for treatment. And then they have to adopt a resolution, they have to send it to us, sign forms, then it goes to DEP, and then DEP verifying those, that information before they issue a permit. Until the DEP issue the permit, we cannot connect or put any tie into anything. So there are multiple steps that goes into that getting that sewer connection.
But the tie-in is definitely going to be to Washington Street versus Westfield Avenue?
That is, I think that's what we are showing, yes. No, we are showing it to Westfield Avenue.
Westfield Avenue?
Yeah, we're showing it to Westfield Avenue.
Okay, that obviously makes a difference.
Yeah.
Okay. Will Washington Street be resurfaced, repaved, recurbed after this project?
It will be recurbed on our site, in front of our property. We're going to put the sidewalk. Again, if there is, and that will be the township engineer, if during construction, if things happens to the street, it gets damaged, then of course, the town will require the applicant to repair those surfaces.
With regard to the deliveries that potential store owners are going to be having, are they going to restrict the size of the vehicles that can be making deliveries? Because I know today, the pet store on the corner is a very small store, probably the same square footage that you're looking to rent out to retailers, and I've seen tractor-trailers parked on Madison Hill Road making those deliveries.
Yeah, I'm not aware of what will be the ultimate use of that commercial area, depending upon the business. Mostly now, like, again, if it's a restaurant, most of these deliveries are through box trucks or things of that nature. Unless it's like a chain restaurant or something, then yeah, you can expect a tractor-trailer, otherwise usually it's a box truck that can make the deliveries along Westfield Avenue.
It'll be restricted to Westfield Avenue versus Washington Street?
Because practically, that's the most convenient location for them to pick up and drop off, because the retail area is facing the Westfield Avenue.
Mr. Khan, the applicant has presented testimony that there's a loading zone within the building that will be used to unload for the retail space. So there's going to be a restriction based both upon the height of the building coming in and the size of the loading space.
That is correct. You're absolutely correct.
But they, they should not be allowed to have a tractor-trailer unloading on the outside at any time as part of this.
Okay, because that's happening today, which obviously isn't the issue today that we're facing.
And I think applicant will be willing to accept that restriction. I don't see an issue.
Okay. My next question is regarding the water drainage. You said that you're doing studies so that the pitch goes out to the right section, so that, you know, my house is adjacent to the property. My concern is rain. Obviously, we have much more rain today than we did when this plan first started. Snow runoff, and when the plows come to plow that property, where will they be placing those snow piles? Because that's going to create additional runoff.
First of all, under the current condition, there is no separation along the property line between the applicant's property and your property. So any, and plus, it's very flat, so usually probably you will be the best person to see puddling of water along the property. So what we are doing is we are trying to provide some kind of a drainage, a proper drainage, that instead of water sitting in the middle of the property, we are providing it to run from the property into the township sewer system, storm sewer. And to protect your properties, actually, all the properties are on either side, we are proposing either a separation through via a wall or the curb. So the water, what, under the current condition, supposed to go to your property, is going to be restricted to go to your property through that wall or the curb. So everything we are directing towards either Westfield or Washington Street.
Away from my property.
Away from your property.
Okay.
So you will, you will see things getting better for you during heavier storms.
Okay. I don't know whether this question is for you, it might have been for the architect, but are they going to allow pets in those buildings as renters? Because as we know, some dog owners do not take care of cleaning up after their pets. The concern is you're going to have sidewalks, obviously no grassy landscaping, where they're probably...
To be honest, I have, I don't know, I don't have the answer for that question, yeah.
And you talked about the lighting, outside lighting. Will it be shining onto my property, or is it going to be reflected out, so it's just...
No, actually, that's the beauty, like, the way we designed it, like, again, this parking area is 90% covered with the building above it. So what we are proposing is just like a ceiling-mounted lights. So you won't even see the light fixture from the street. Everything is shining downward, and like, let's assume like these lights are ceiling lights. It's just going to throw the shine, the parking surface, and that's what we're going, we are planning. So you won't see any glow or shine or anything coming to your property or towards the street.
Okay. And I don't know whether this is a question for you or not, as far as, you know, my quality of life obviously is changing. I've been there forever. Right now, my garbage company, I pay for backyard pickup, the gate that they currently use faces the parking lot that's existing there. Obviously, they're not going to be able to access that gate. Is there a proposal to put a vinyl fencing along my property line, including a possible gate and a pathway from the street?
There will be a wall along your property line.
Okay.
So, and I think as Mr. Martin mentioned, we are still going to find out which wall to go. Either it will be a six-foot-high brick wall, or it's a combination of a knee wall with a fence on it. So if I understand your question, you're asking if we can put a gate in there?
Right, because right now, they're not, once this is started, they're going to have no access to the current gate that they use.
Oh, that, I think, I don't have the answer for that, like, how to address. They cannot access your property from the Washington Street frontage?
There's a gate, there's a fence on the other side without a gate.
And that's your fence?
My fence. I'd like to have that put into consideration, if possible. You know, I also have an in-house oil tank that gets filled from that side of the house as well. I just want to make sure that that's going to be accessible during construction, because I heat with oil.
If that gate is being moved from the side to the front...
Right.
It will solve your issues as to, okay.
Yes.
That's something I believe we can, I think Mr. Hill is...
Consider, sure, okay. And just give me one moment to make sure I don't have to come back up with more questions. I think that's it for now. I'll have more probably for traffic, but thank you.
You're very welcome.
Hi, my name is Camilla. I'm a resident 33 Washington. My question to you is the light on the outside of the building, directly right on Washington, they're going to be shining 24/7, even though they're not directly going into our street, but what, sorry.
Oh, it might...
Yes, so the lights are going to be constantly on, what you're trying to tell me, even though they're not going to be directly towards the street or in our houses. We actually already have somebody whose light is not directly towards our home, but unfortunately, what is happening is every single night, my fiancee and I, we have trouble falling asleep due to the light being constantly on. Can it be considered to be at least motion sensor on the back of the building? So that way, just in case somebody walks by, these lights are not on constantly to where, including to myself, my fiancee, we have to get up at 5:00 in the morning every single day. So we work till like 6:00 at night. This is not going to let us rest, especially since our master bedroom is at the front of our home. So that is a big concern for, including all the residents, they're going to be directly in that spotlight.
Just to clear, like, we are not proposing any lights along Washington Street on the building. So the only lights you will see, as I mentioned, is these ceiling-mounted light fixtures. They are basically mounted to the ceiling of the building. And so you won't see the glow, but again, these are LED, very soft-type lights. But again, I think it's, you have a valid question, that the timing, we can put these lights on a timer from dawn to dusk or something, or a combination of which fixtures to light up at different times, so that at least, because by regulations and ordinances, we are required to provide minimum lighting for safety and circulation, for traffic circulation.
Correct, and I completely understand that, but it's the same thing in the garage, in actual garage. Would that be also the lights that will be shutting off at a certain time? Can that be done, or is it going to be on all night long?
Again, we can look into it. We can put certain fixtures in order to have enough minimum security lighting in the area and certain fixtures on a timer. So that's something, yeah, we can definitely look into it.
Yes, please, because I know by the parking garage, and I had it even in other states I lived in, that was a big concern for a lot of residents, in that, including myself, because the lights were constantly on, and a lot of residents were very restful.
Definitely, we can look into it and try to do that.
Appreciate, thank you.
Very well.
Camilla, what is your last name?
I'm sorry?
Your last name.
Your name.
My name is Camilla Villasenor. I'm a, I live at 33 Washington with my fiancee, Derek Slavinsky.
They still didn't get your last name.
Villasenor, so it's spelled V-I-L-L-A, S like Sam, E-N-O-R, it's like a villa like a house, and senior like messages put together. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to come forward? Please come so, please do so. Your name and address, please.
Jim Bernaski, 22, Washington Street. When is this project going to start? Is there any timeframe for this right now?
First step is to get approval from the planning board, and then they have to draw their permits after that. So depending on the outcome of today, they want to develop it very quickly.
Okay, so it could happen this year, or next year, or the year after, or when?
I think that's the target, to start sometime in this year, so...
This year? Okay. You were talking about on 26 Washington Street, there's, there's a huge oak tree, and on my property, there's a huge oak tree. The one on 26 is a pretty straight oak tree, it's about 70 years old, same as mine. Mine is leaning at a 15-degree list, so once you tear all this stuff out of there, that tree is going to fall over, because it's leaning. So I just want you, the town to know, I addressed this with the Public Works some years ago, and they never did anything about the tree. But if you look, I have a picture of it on my phone, I couldn't bring a print out of it, but once you start working there, I can guarantee you, this tree's coming down.
Is it the town right of way?
It's leaning, you want to see a picture of it?
Oh, is it in the town right of way or on your property?
It's on, yeah, yeah, well, it's on town property. It's not my tree, it's the town's tree.
The right of way.
It's right at the curb.
Oh, you're talking about this tree, like the second?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I, I...
My concern is that once they start demolition, they're going to start breaking roots and then tearing up the driveway, and the curbing is all holding this tree up. Once they tear that stuff out, this tree's coming down.
That was, I mean...
My experience with the DPW is they've got a very adequate tree maintenance program.
They do not, because if you looked at this tree, you would agree that this tree is...
Trim light.
Going to fall down. Can I show you the picture, sir?
I'll take, I'll have DPW, I'll look at it for...
Can I show you the picture?
I, yeah, let me see it real quick. Okay, now, all right, I'll have it right here.
Mr. Mayor, the applicant has already agreed to protect that tree as well, so that's, that's...
Yeah, I have it right here, it's leaning, but I'll have DPW look at it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Khan, may, Mr. Chair, may I have just a follow-up question, based on some of the testimony from the public? Mr. Khan, would you be willing to select a Kelvin temperature that's a warm light for that under garage area?
Yes.
Not, not like that very bright, cold light? And can you discuss the appropriateness of having security lighting at nighttime, so that lighting would be dimmed to the minimum needed for safety purposes inside that garage area?
Yeah, I mean, as I, Institute of Electrical Engineers Association, I believe, they have a minimum standard set for safety. I believe, I have to double-check, but I think it's .35-foot candle or .4-foot candle minimum at all times, especially for parking areas like this and the car traveling. Right now, again, we are complying, and we have more illumination when all the lights are lit. So that's something we can work it out, a combination of maybe dimming some lights or dimming all the lights, or turning off some lights during the nighttime hours, so that we can at least meet that minimum requirement, but provide less, what do you say, glow or shine.
Okay, so if this application is voted unfavorably, you'd be agreeable to that as a condition of approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is the plan, Mr. Khan, is the plan to demolish all buildings on the site and start afresh?
That is correct.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to come forward, ask a question? Seeing nobody come forward, I'd like a motion to close this.
Motion.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, our next witness is Corey Chase from Dynamic Traffic.
Please state your name and spell it, please.
Corey, C-O-R-E-Y, last name's Chase, C-H-A-S-E.
I, Corey Chase.
I, Corey Chase.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I will tell the truth in this matter.
To tell the truth in this matter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, counsel. All right, Mr. Chase, as the other experts have done, please provide the board with your credentials, the area of expertise, licenses you hold, and whether you've been accepted before boards or courts of the state of New Jersey as a professional traffic engineer.
Certainly, again, good evening, everyone. Corey Chase, principal with the firm Dynamic Traffic, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from the University of Massachusetts. Been qualified as an expert before over a hundred and twenty municipalities throughout the state, including this township.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, so, uh, Mr. Chase, if you could please give the board and the public your findings with respect to traffic generation, parking adequacy, and, uh, address any comments in the review letter from, uh, the board traffic engineer.
Certainly, and as part of my testimony, I'm gonna be referring to the site plans that were just presented by our engineer, which were last revised January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, as Mr. Khan mentioned, we are proposing two full-axis driveways to the property's parking garage. One will be located along Washington Avenue, or apologies, one will be located along Westfield Avenue and the other located along Washington Street. There'll be two-way circulation aisles provided throughout the proposed parking garage that are twenty-four feet in width. That does comply with the residential site improvement standards. Uh, as was mentioned, we are proposing thirty-nine apartments in this facility, thirteen of which are one-bedroom units, twelve of which are two-bedroom units, and fourteen three-bedroom units. A total of sixty-nine parking stalls are gonna be proposed, thirty of which are located in tandem format totaling sixty spaces, uh, leaving nine single-loaded spaces. Uh, from a traffic generation standpoint, we looked at data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the national and state standard for developing traffic projections using the eleventh edition of the Trip Generation Manual, which is the current edition of the Trip Generation Manual. Uh, the thirty-nine residential units are projected to generate a maximum of sixteen peak hour trips during the weekday morning period. Uh, as traffic engineers, we focus on the peak commuter hours occurring in the weekday morning and weekday evening periods. Uh, during the PM peak hour, projected to generate a maximum of twenty trips from the facility associated with the residential dwellings. Uh, to give the board an idea as to what that level of traffic generation constitutes, the New Jersey Department of Transportation's set a threshold of one hundred additional trips in a peak hour as being a significant increase in traffic. So this development for, for the residential portion would generate approximately twenty percent of that threshold for being a significant increase in traffic, so. Uh, the residential portion would not be a significant source of traffic generation. Uh, as was indicated, we are proposing a one thousand six hundred square foot commercial component to this facility, likely to be occupied either by a retail or restaurant tenant. Given the size and nature of that building, you know, we would certainly expect that the majority of the patrons of that facility would certainly be utilized by people within the existing municipality, people currently traveling along Westfield Avenue, uh, depending on the type and nature of that facility. So wouldn't expect, uh, whether it's a, a restaurant or a retail tenant within that a commercial space to be a, a significant source of traffic generation. I know there's been a lot of discussion on parking this evening. Uh, as was indicated by both the architect and the engineer, there are, the, the thirty tandem spaces are going to be assigned, um, so there's twenty-six multi-bedroom units. One of those spaces would be assigned to each of those twenty-six units, leaving the four additional spaces to be assigned to one of the remaining one-bedroom units. Rutgers University, uh, recently published in September of two thousand twenty-three, they published a white paper. It was entitled "How Much Is Enough: Parking Usage in New Jersey Rental Units." Uh, they surveyed a hundred and seventy-five properties, which totaled out to tw- almost twenty-nine thousand residential apartment units to survey the parking demand for all of those facilities. Uh, they published the parking rates, and it was really done to, as the residential site improvement standards are going through a reevaluation. Uh, they're currently, the parking standards identified by the residential site improvement standards are set as a minimum. Uh, they're actually looking to change those to maximums because what we found, and what was really indicated by this research, some by Rutgers, is that there's uh, an excess of parking provided for multifamily residential developments. So what that study found was, for one-bedroom units, the average vehicle demand was approximately one vehicle per unit. For two-bedroom units, it was one-point-four-five vehicles per unit. And for three-bedroom units, it was one-point-eight vehicles per unit. Uh, if you took those parking generation statistics, multiplied it by the bedroom count in our facility, that would generate a, a maximum of fifty-five vehicles anticipated to be parked on-site. So well under the sixty-nine spaces that we are proposing on-site. Um, and again, as I mentioned, the, you know, the residential site improvement standards, the state's looking to reevaluate that and reconsider those historic parking standards that are previously published, um, just by the fact that, you know, the today's occupant of these facilities may have one car at most, e- even if there are multiple occupants in that facility. Uh, it's not the, I, I think a lot of people assume that if it's a two-bedroom unit, you'll have two cars. If it's a three-bedroom unit, you'll have three cars. You know, certainly surveying twenty-nine thousand residential units within the state indicates that that's not in fact the case. The parking is much lower. Um, we also took a look at parking generation data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers in the sixth edition of Parking Generation uh, to look at typical parking generation requirements for if this was a restaurant, or if this was a retail occupant in that commercial space. Um, looking at data for a high turnover, turnover sit-down restaurant suggests approximately six spaces per thousand square feet would, uh, given that we're proposing sixteen hundred square feet of commercial space, would come out to about needing, uh, ten vehicles to accommodate if it was a restaurant space. Uh, if this was retail, uh, like a generic strip retail, it's about three-point-one-three spaces per thousand square feet, which would, uh, translate to approximately five vehicles if it was commercial. So you're looking at between an additional five to ten vehicles, depending on the user in that commercial space. Um, we did do parking surveys along Westfield Avenue between Liberty Street and Lincoln Boulevard. Uh, we did it on a weekday from eleven AM to two PM, and from five PM to nine PM. And then again, on a Saturday, again, same timeframes, eleven AM to two PM, five PM to nine PM, uh, to see what sort of available parking there was along Westfield Avenue in the vicinity of the site. Uh, again, you know, in my professional opinion, given that that commercial space is located up front, located along Westfield Avenue, anybody that's looking to utilize that space would be looking for on-street parking in the direct vicinity of that. It's gonna be looking for parking along Westfield Avenue. Um, during those times, found that a minimum of twenty-five spaces were available, again, between Liberty Street and Lincoln Boulevard along Westfield Avenue. So, uh, again, in my professional opinion, looking that we're projecting to generate an additional five to ten vehicles, depending on what the ultimate occupant of that space is, more than sufficient on-street parking to accommodate that additional demand. Mr. Hale, that's all I had for direct testimony. Be happy to touch on anything else. Or Mr. Troutman, I know that you issued a review letter. I tried to, to hit on all your comments in that letter in my direct, but happy to answer anything else that you have, that the board has as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Again, no further direct questions at this time.
The Rutgers study, did that include tandem parking spots?
It just included parking generation, so they didn't study the actual number of parking spots. They studied the amount of vehicles that were being generated by those units. So it's actual parking demand, not parking supply.
I, I, I understand the logic you're trying to give, but once a two-space tandem is given to an apartment, even if they only have one car, like you're trying to portray, the two spots are gone. So your, your, your math is kind of jumbled a little bit. Um, the tandem, all those tandem spots are gonna go to the units, and the two spots are gone.
They are, but in, in that survey, you know, they didn't differentiate between cars that were generated by the units themselves, cars that were generated by visitors, so under the same scenario, a person that's assigned a tandem spot has a single car, that secondary spot can be used for a visitor.
If they have that spot. Um, can you just go over the hours again you did the studies? It kind of went a little fast.
My apologies, sir. Eleven AM to two PM, five PM to nine PM, again, on a weekday, and on a Saturday.
Typically, you found twenty-five spaces on Westfield Avenue or on side streets also?
Just Westfield Avenue, sir.
No further questions. Anybody on the board have questions for this witness?
I just have one question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I didn't hear, uh, Mr. Chase, did you provide the, the number or demand for this building, the residential portion of the building, per the Rutgers study, the recommended calculation under the Rutgers study compared to what's proposed?
I did, Paul. Uh, based on the numbers in the Rutgers study, this building would be projected to generate a vehicle demand of fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
Correct.
And we're providing sixty-nine spaces.
Thank you.
You, you said there are twenty-five spaces on Westfield Avenue. How far up and down Westfield Avenue did you go, again?
We went from Liberty Street to Lincoln Boulevard.
And you found twenty-five on both sides of the street?
Available, yes.
What is the, um, complex going to generate as far as, uh, visitors, uh, to the tenants of this building? Have we calculated that or discussed that in any way?
So unfortunately, sir, there's no specific breakout of visitors versus tenant traffic. Um, the IT, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they publish data based on the number of units. It, it includes both visitor and tenant data in that number, so I don't have, unfortunately, a specific breakout of visitors versus tenant traffic.
Your calculation, based on the number of cars, is based on the business part of it? Or both? Because the tenants automatically have their own spots within the building. So that's for the, for the business itself? I just want to clarify that.
Correct, so the, the, the numbers that I spoke to, those are based on the thirty-nine residential units. Uh, the commercial space will obviously would have its own independent generation beyond that.
Liberty to Linden. Do you have the right street as Linden?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not finding the street.
I thought you said Linden. You said Lincoln, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
We both heard Linden. Surprised you found those spots, because I tried to park there, and I don't find them there. Anyone else on the board have any questions? Seeing none, I'd like to open this session to the public for any questions to this witness's testimony. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mike.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Nick.
Nate?
Second, yeah.
Bob, bring word, forty-five Washington Street. Just curious, when these people in the condos have visitors, say, half of them have visitors and extra twenty cars, where are they, what did the study show they're all parking?
So again, as I indicated, you know, the, the demand suggests that we're gonna generate a maximum of fifty-five spaces, or fifty-five vehicles. Again, with sixty-nine spaces on-site, there's gonna be a certain amount of people that'll be able to park on-site. Uh, any additional, uh, visitors would be required to park on-street. Uh, again, just based on the orientation of the building, where the commercial space is located, would anticipate that, you know, those visitors would park on Westfield Avenue.
Hi, it's Camila again, I'm thirty-three Washington. So my question to you is, when you conducted this survey, correct? Was this during the busy holiday time, or was it this regular downtown?
Uh, we do it during typical times, so it was done at the end of January, beginning of February.
Okay, January and February, so not taking into consideration the Thanksgiving, um, taking to consideration mostly, especially retail, um, especially a work retail. Um, during the holiday time, where the most people are here. And including to that, there's a ton of traffic, including to myself. I know on my street, um, especially during the holiday time, I was trying to make a right-hand turn to my driveway, and I almost got struck from right side. Including to that, when I was exiting my own driveway to go to work early in the morning, I almost got struck again. Because cars do not take into consideration that it's twenty-five miles an hour. They just drive by at fifteen miles an hour, fifty. And that is during the busy holiday time. So I can tell you right now, on our little street, um, on Washington, during the holiday time, there's a ton of traffic. Not including to putting the retail and the restaurant. And including to, to the restaurant is, is it being taken into consideration additional employees are gonna be working there. Up to how many employees are gonna be working there? Because I can't see that day-in-day, me working in healthcare service. We not only don't have enough parking for our, um, uh, to, to, basically to our customers that are coming in, we don't have enough parking to our employees. So what happens is, and our office is, is a residential area. It is, so I see people walking out of their homes every day, looking at parking meter. Two, most of houses, they have up to three vehicles, two parking spaces on each driveway. So there's, leaves out one additional vehicle, including to the unit. So that means that these vehicles, not only employees, due to also the residents, gonna be parking on our streets in, in front of our homes. So that is not taking into consideration that the capacity of the building, including during the busiest time, is gonna overtake. Everything is gonna overtake. We already have a little bit of a battle on our little street daily with parking. We, we do, we do. Not only our street, ourselves, but to, uh, all of our, the resident. So when we do have the busiest time, including to that, we have the nail salon on Washington Street. We do have other places there. People actually park in our streets. So, uh, no, it's, my question is, how do you consider, especially the busier time, which is the holiday time, of the issue with the actual parking? Because your surveys was taking from January to February, just not a very busy time.
So, and again, that was really to look at on-street parking, again, to serve the retail and potential restaurant tenant, which is located along Westfield Avenue. Um, you know, certainly the studies for the residential portion of the development. I mean, Rutgers surveyed twenty-nine thousand units throughout the state and definitively defined that the parking requirements that we generally look at are well beyond the parking demand that's out there. So I, I'm more than comfortable, in my professional opinion, saying that there's more than sufficient parking to accommodate these units all on-site. The traffic generation, as I mentioned, by this development, i- it's twenty percent of the level of a significant increase in traffic as to what the state would identify as having a resultant impact on traffic conditions. So twenty trips, that's one trip every three minutes during the peak hour. The, the average person's not gonna notice one additional vehicle every three minutes on the adjacent roadway network.
To tell you the truth, that your ratio comparing to the residential, to the traffic that is gonna accumulate, that is not gonna increase by twenty percent, I'm, I mean, I'm not, no math whiz, but I know specifically as being, you, working for twelve years in, in retail, actually, over twelve years in retail, knowing that it, it's, the ratio doesn't even substantially take over the capacity. It, it's not being taken into consideration what exactly is gonna be happening during to, when people come for lunch, for brunch, for the holiday time to come and rest. And including to that, looking at the plant of the actual building. So the traffic is gonna be coming in through the Washington and through Westfield. So looking at the full thing, it's, it's, doesn't even make sense to, at least, to do, like, including to our street, to do maybe, um, like, emergency exit, to maybe downsize our traffic flow, and to, to even, and I'm sorry that I didn't ask you this question, to even raise up the, the restaurant to the first floor somehow to reduce the amount of people that live in there, to at least to do kind of like a roundabout, so both traffic go through Westfield, the in and an out. That, that makes more sense to at least to take care of the residents on the Washington and to making sure that we do block off, and that we do have that emergency exit, yes. But at least raise up the restaurant and then to do the flow through both sides of the building of the front.
As your question, instead of reconfiguring the building, is can the exit be eliminated onto Washington Avenue? Would that interfere with the flow of traffic in your?
It would create dead-end parking, which, you know, typically, we're not in favor of providing dead-end park. And when we look to, you know, provide two means of ingress and egress. Certainly would defer to emergency management, whether they would wanna see two means of ingress and egress at this, this facility, that's something that they typically look for. And again, you know, and I'm not trying to address your concerns, but the, the level of traffic generation in this facility, as I mentioned, you know, it's very low on the traffic generation scale. That's why I talked about that 20% threshold. The state indicates if it was 100 trips during a peak hour, that's what they consider to be a significant increase in traffic. And, and we're at only 20. So we're at 20% of that threshold for being a significant increase. So well below what they would term, you know, a significant increase in traffic. So from a traffic generation standpoint, it's very low.
To you it's low, but to us, as a residents of Washington, it's actually in a significant increase to the traffic that we currently have. Because including to that, we can't even have our kids play in the streets. We can't. Because of the fact that the traffic flow is going to go 20% up.
And again, it's not going to go 20% up. We have again, two means of ingress and egress, so not all the traffic is going to be entering or exiting onto West, onto Washington Street. A portion of it's going to be using Westfield Avenue, so.
I understand that, but at the same time, when we had construction on the sidewalks on the Washington, about 90% of the traffic was coming through Washington. And that was such a heavy traffic to where I, I couldn't even leave my driveway. I couldn't even leave my driveway for at least 20 minutes.
Mr. Chase, did your study just do trip generation or do you split between Washington and Westfield Avenue? The number of anticipated?
I didn't split. We just did trip generation, sorry, I didn't do a distribution.
See if we could answer a question.
You also have to keep in mind, they're eliminating, uh, that back parking lot to that sushi restaurant. All that traffic using that back parking lot to that sushi restaurant has gone away with this redevelopment.
Linda Marho, 34, Washington Street. You keep indicating or referencing back to the Rutgers survey. What percentage of those dwellings that they surveyed have access to public transportation where they wouldn't have a car anyway?
I don't know that information, ma'am.
Be curious to know that, because when you keep talking about not everybody has a car, they have to go someplace, they're going to work.
They do, but I can tell you, developing multifamily residential across the state and in New York and Pennsylvania as well, the common misperception is that these dwelling units have two, three, four vehicles. And all of the studies, uh, the study that Rutgers did, the studies produced by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, all indicate that the actual parking demand for these facilities is significantly lower than that. It, it's in, really, it goes in line with what the redevelopment plans suggested in going to 1.75, uh, vehicles per unit. You know, I worked on in municipalities where they go down as low as one space per unit.
Help me understand, everybody's referring to 1.3 or one and a quarter percent of a car? How do you park half of a car? You have a car or you don't have a car?
It's not a quarter of a car, so it's, it's averages. So, you know, somebody may have one vehicle, somebody may have two vehicles, somebody may have no vehicles. So when you look at that average, that's how you get to this ratio.
You said you did surveys on Westfield Avenue during 11 to 2, 5 to 9. Did you do any of those surveys on Washington Street?
We did not, because again, it's our anticipation that, given the location of the commercial, uh, portion of this building, that that parking would be concentrated on Westfield Avenue.
I'd like to know how many available spaces during these normal hours are on Washington Street? As I can tell you, maybe there's limited in front of four houses that you can park two cars?
And, and again, it's not our intention to add any additional parking demand on that street offsite, which is why we didn't do surveys on that street, ma'am.
And I'm concerned, like somebody mentioned on the visitors, parking, where are they going to park? Where are my visitors going to park?
So, uh, as I mentioned, you know, with assigning those tandem spaces to a unit, if they only have one car, they're going to have the ability to park an additional vehicle in that tandem spot.
And if they have two cars?
If they have two cars, it's likely that they're going to park on Westfield Avenue.
Okay, because you, Westfield Avenue you can't park on on a good day. I get that you did surveys, but nine o'clock, there's no restaurants open, there's no facilities, people aren't parking there. So who's parking in those spots? That you came up with, there's 25, I believe you said, spots available?
Yes.
And no one's going to park at, call it Catherine Street and Liberty and walk all the way practically to Madison Hill Road to get into, or the middle of the block? People don't walk. They want to park right in front of a store, right in front of an entrance and walk minimally.
I understand that's their desire, but again, you know, and we see a lot of ground-floor commercial space with facilities like this as well, with these multifamily buildings. It's very typical to provide a small, uh, commercial space on the floor of that. What it's really trying to establish is neighborhood retail. It's not intended to be a, a national tenant that's going to draw people in from Rahway and other municipalities that are going to come here to go to this, you know, very small retail building. It's intended to encourage neighborhood commercial space so that people that live in the neighborhood, people that work in the neighborhood will use this facility. It becomes more of a walkable destination than, than a driving destination.
So let me just make sure I'm understanding. So these retail establishments, you don't think out-of-towners are going to come and drive and park here?
This one in particular, it's 1,600 square feet in size. It's not a large commercial space, so you're not going to have a significant commercial tenant in there. It's a very small space. And what we typically see is more neighborhood-oriented, commercial users in these types of facilities.
I mean, I frequently visit a little establishment down further on Westfield Avenue, little retail boutique, and there's always cars in that parking lot. I don't live in Rahway and that's in Rahway. So I find it hard to believe that you don't think out-of-towners are going to use these retail spaces.
And again, ma'am, I'm not saying that no one is. I'm just saying it's not going to be like a shopping center where it's a destination-oriented use. And everyone drives there. Certain, there'll certainly be patrons of this facility that would drive there, but not to the magnitude that it's going to generate 30 additional parked cars on Westfield Avenue, in my professional opinion.
With regard to the entrance and exit out of Westfield Avenue, are they going to be able to make a left-hand turn from that parking lot? I know 7-Eleven's restricted, you have to go with the flow of traffic.
It'll ultimately be the county, it's county jurisdiction, so it'll be ultimately the county's decision, but it's our intention that they'll be allowed to make a left turn out of that site. This facility certainly will not generate the, the level of traffic that 7-Eleven generates. Generates far less. Um, they're, you know, it's going to be residential traffic, so they're obviously going to be familiar with the area, familiar with the traffic patterns on Westfield Avenue.
Let me just make sure I have all my questions answered here. That's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Derek Slawinski, 33, Washington Street. Where's the fire lanes going to go on West, across Westfield? How many is going to take parking space away from Westfield and Washington for the fire?
The fire lane, sir? Uh, I'm not aware of the emergency services requesting that the frontage be striped as a fire lane?
There's going to be no fire lane?
Not, not to my knowledge, sir.
There is no requirement. This process, project has been reviewed by the fire department, they never requested. And usually, either you don't put fire lanes within the right of it. It's already understood, like if there's a parking, you put no parking signs, or things of that nature.
Don't in Washington either, right? Washington Street no fire lane?
No, no.
And what about snow removal, when it's snowing outside?
Most of the site, again, as you know, like, is under the building, so there will be some snow, maybe on the cars and things like that. So we have room like maybe, I mean, like, within the green areas that we have, we can push that. But again, we are not anticipating, because 90% of the parking deck is covered with the building.
Jim Bernaski, 22, Washington Street. My opinion of the tandem parking spots is you really only have 35, because no one's going to pull into a spot where they're blocking somebody in. That being said, the other thing is that it's, you're going to be able to drive from Westfield Avenue to Washington Street. So when the traffic backs up on Westfield Avenue, people are going to be cutting right through there and come down Washington Street, then they'll go down Madison Road. Because they, they do it now, they're driving at 50 miles an hour down the road. We really need speed bumps or something on this road. There was an accident there not long ago, somebody was coming out of the apartment building next to my house, and because the guy's going so fast, boom, he crashed right into him. So you, you have issues on Washington Street like everybody else presented. There, there should have been a study about Washington Street and there was none as well. So I would like to see that still implemented, to see what kind of issues is going to come out of this whole mess. Because it's going to be a mess. There's going to be cars coming Westfield Avenue, they're going to cut right through your building and come down Washington Street.
And again, sir, in my professional opinion, you know, it's, it's a garaged facility. I certainly wouldn't anticipate anybody cutting through a parking garage to, to access Washington Avenue.
Do you think they're going to cut through? I think they will, right? Thank you.
Praxpasi, 15, Washington Street. I had asked Mr. Toll about parking by permit. Can the residents get that? Because the parking is going to be the problem with this project. And I have a problem right now, I'm right across from the existing building.
Mr. Spaziani, can I answer that, please, for you? I'd be glad to. Uh, I was going to say it at the end of the night, folks. If this building, or any other, there's going to be more buildings getting built along this road. It's, you know, I always hear, Mr. Mayor, when are we going to have a downtown Clark? What are they doing on Westfield Avenue? Well, here we are. And now we got a million problems, which I understand. I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm not saying your perception is bad, but got to get used to it. I'm going to be honest. Parking residential, yes, we can help you with that, Mr. Spaziani, when we see a problem. We're not going to do it today. When that building is up, if that is causing long-term parking effects on Washington, um, street, you come to us, we'll have the PD survey it immediately. We've done this in a couple of other areas of Clark, and we would be glad at that point to make it resident-only parking.
It's already, we have the hair salon.
Mr. Spaziani, I know exactly what it is. I know.
But I already talked to Toll, I talked to town about six months ago.
I know you have.
Nothing's gone on.
Not yet, it hasn't, no, because we got to see what this develop. See, I'm not going to say yes to you, as others might do.
I already have a problem.
We understand that. There's a lot of problems with parking in different streets in town. We do understand that. But believe it or not, when you have a, um, registration for your vehicle, you're allowed to park on public streets. You know, parking on public streets is allowed. It's allowed in every other town in New Jersey. Some streets are more problematic than others. I understand that. But there's no magic wand. What I can only tell the folks on Washington Street, if this project adds more to it, we will take a strong look at it with our police department, and we will then be happy to issue resident-only parking for you and passes for your guests when you have a party at your house. We've done it in a couple of areas of town. We just can't do it because your street is crowded. Because if that's the case, then I'm going to make most every street in Clark resident-only parking. I mean, there's only so much government can do for you. It's where you live, your neighborhood, like I said. Mr. Mayor, what, what are they going to do with AMP? When are they going to start developing downtown Clark? What are we going to do on, on Westfield Avenue? Here we are. We're developing it. Here we are. And there's a million problems with it. Let me ask you another question. There was a question tonight about parking, if there's a restaurant, where do you park when you go to Westfield? Where do you park when you go to Cranford to eat? Well, I do sometimes, I know other people do. You never went to downtown Westfield to a restaurant there and ate? You should, it's very good. Did you ever go to downtown Cranford to a restaurant there and eat? You should, they're pretty good. Why not? Okay, there you go. So then you're not going to them, they won't come to you. You aren't going to them, they're not going to go to you. I'll tell you a quick story. My wife and I were going to go eat downtown, uh, Westfield a couple of weeks ago, it's very cold out. Had reservations, it was about 15 minutes prior to the reservation. I couldn't park, you know what I did? Got on the phone, told a little white lie. A plumber's at my house, he's not getting out of here in time, I'll see you, and I went to another town and ate. If you can't park, you're not going to go there. That's the principle, that's the bottom line. If there's not parking on Westfield Avenue and you're, already told me tonight on the record that there's very little parking left on Washington Avenue, correct? You said that? Okay, so where are they going to park then? If there's very little parking on Washington Avenue, taken up by the residents there, and Westfield Avenue is busy, where are they going to go?
What happens is when we're at work, they park in front of our house, and then we come home and we don't have.
Mr. Spaziani, I understand that, it happens in a lot of streets in town.
Our street is actually unique.
I know your street very well. I'm up and down your street several times a week.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is a period for.
And then my other thing I want to say to you is, most one-bedrooms, two people rent it, boyfriend and girlfriend. Across the street from me, everybody's got two cars, they only got one spot. Two bedrooms, you got to look at three cars, a mother, a father, and a sibling might drive. You with this, you know, one car per two bedroom is crazy. Whatever your Rutgers study is, is wrong.
They surveyed 29,000. It's 2023, it just came out, sir. It's, it's.
Well, I'm just saying.
And I'm telling you that the resident.
How much are these things going to cost? They're probably going to be $2,600 of rent for a one-bedroom. You think one person's going to rent that? It's going to be a couple that has two cars. I just want to throw it out there. As are your reality. I know you've wanted this project, but everything you've thrown is smoke and mirrors.
Mr. Chase, have you had opportunity to do any surveys at your own firm of multifamily residential? I know our firm's done many and we've seen the same trend that you just testified to, that the vehicle ownership is trending downward.
Yeah, Mr. Troutman, and that's correct. So we've done similar studies. They've all produced, uh, parking generation rates, so the actual vehicles parked per unit, that were well lower than two per unit, trending towards 1.5, e- even some approaching one. And again, that's really, I'm sure, what was taken into consideration when they developed the redevelopment plan and looked at, you know, the, the parking requirement that was listed in that.
Anyone else in the audience wish to come forward? Seeing no one, a motion to close.
Motion.
Second? Nate, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as our final witness, I'd like to call upon our professional planner, Justin Ossielo.
State your name and spell it, please.
Justin Ossielo, J-U-S-T-I-N-A-U-C-I-E-L-L-O.
Please raise your hand, I, Justin Ossielo.
I, Justin Ossielo.
I solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will tell the truth in this matter, so help me God.
Tell the truth in this matter, so help me God.
Sir Ossielo, you know the truth.
Sure.
Please provide your credentials.
A master's degree in, in planning at Rutgers University. I've been a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 2008.
Move to accept.
I've.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Sir Ossielo, I know that we've gone through the, the relief that we're seeking, generally in compliance with the zone and the redevelopment plan. If you could please provide the, uh, justifications for any relief being sought in connection with this app.
Sure. So the board has heard, uh, you know, extensive testimony this evening about parking. I believe, Mr. Ricky, there's, uh, there's relief, um, for parking that's required, uh, and that's being called out as a waiver, uh, if, if I'm correct?
Just to clarify, that the way the redevelopment plan was written, it had a specific requirement for residential spaces that we would consider a separate standard that would traditionally be considered a variance or under redevelopment scenario, a deviation. Because the parking associated with ground-floor uses has been problematic along this entire corridor, we were conservative in writing the requirement into the plan, but specifically indicated in the plan that, you know, should the board find that, um, Westfield Avenue and/or other, for other reasons, that they don't want to require that parking associated with the commercial use, it was written in the plan that that's something that was likely anticipated. But we were conservative in requiring the parking for that ground-floor commercial space, if that's clear. So we were overly conservative in that regard, because we wanted to hear from a traffic engineer, someone else that could justify that this facility can work and operate, as well as the board's traffic engineer as well, who seemed to have binned favorably about the parking for this site. This plan was also developed prior to the Rutgers study, and I, I can tell you as a, as a land use planner, that the parking that we did require for the residential portion of this project is higher than, at least that I've written in a redevelopment plan elsewhere to date. So we were very conservative in that regard.
Okay, great. So, you know, for the purpose of the, of the record, I think it's important from a planning standpoint, just to reiterate the points that were made, uh, by, by Mr. Chase in terms of, um, the parking, uh, that's expect, that's expected to be generated on the site. I think, um, Mr. Ricky, um, you know, raised a good point in his review letter, talking about the commercial space is a, is a modest space of about, uh, about, uh, 1,600, uh, square feet. Mr. Chase, through his testimony, uh, you know, made it clear that the generation from whatever commercial use it may be, whether it's retail or. whether it's retail or restaurant, is gonna be relatively, you know, minimal. Mr. Chase, again, as a, as a, you know, well-respected, you know, traffic engineer, who has done studies all around the state, I think the board can rest on his testimony, which, again, stated that the commercial generation, you know, whether it may be, you know, retail or restaurant, will be minimal. As Mr. Ricky just stated, the Rutgers study, which, again, Mr. Chase provided testimony on, is showing for the residential portion in 2023, when the study was done, residential uses, with these type of uses, generate a parking demand which is less than what's required in many municipalities. And I can just tell you, from a planning standpoint, you know, land-use ordinances, in many cases, have not caught up with the current realities in the state. And it's not just parking, it's, you know, the types of, you know, permitted uses. There are a lot of uses that have evolved since the pandemic that are relatively new. There's a lot of, you know, repurposing going on in communities across the state. So I think it's important to keep that in mind, from a planning standpoint, when you're looking at the parking on the site, is that, and it's no fault of Mr. Ricky, the, you know, mayor or the town, it's just that, you know, ordinances really haven't caught up with the current realities of the state. And I'm happy to see the Rutgers study from 2023, which, you know, has shown that the parking demands are less than what's written in many ordinances. And this also is just important to keep in mind. But in the terms of to be, you know, conservative, and if we do require a waiver, you know, for the parking situation, which has been shown with the EV credits, as you heard from Mr. Martin, there will be a surplus of parking on the site. But I would say that, you know, the standard for a waiver is reasonableness. And whether the board can see whether the grant of the waiver is reasonable. And I think for all of the reasons that have been stated this evening from the testimony of the other witnesses, I think from a planning standpoint, I think the board can be comfortable in seeing that the grant of a waiver, if a waiver is required, again, to be as conservative as possible, is, you know, reasonable. I, just in terms of the redevelopment plan, I think it's important, for the record, just to state that the objectives of the plan are certainly being advanced with this project. Again, a use variance is not required. These are permitted uses. But I would say that certainly the general welfare of the community is being advanced. There is a provision of a mixed-use product, again, which is, which is one of the objectives of the plan. The affordable housing is a biggie. I know the mayor had spoken about that earlier. There is a mandate from the state. You know, each municipality has a constitutional requirement to comply with the provision of this type of housing. As the mayor had said, it's really out of the hands of the municipality, and not just Clark municipalities, you know, all throughout the state. And really, you know, this is, this is one of the purposes of Mr. Ricky's plan, to provide affordable housing. And that's exactly what's being provided through this plan. It's being provided in accordance with the statute of requirements of the state of New Jersey, the bedroom distribution, et cetera. So I think that that's really, you know, overarching, you know, benefit of this plan. And also, just lastly, this plan, as proposed, will also advance the objective of an appealing, you know, streetscape and visual environment. Certainly, I think, I think we can all agree here that, compared to the current condition, what's proposed in terms of the visual environment and the streetscape is a vast improvement. I know that, you know, for a waiver, it's not the same standard of proof as a C variance. But I think it's important, just to state in terms, again, to be as conservative as possible, there are multiple purposes of zoning from the MLUL that are being advanced. I think the biggie here is general welfare, that's criteria A. You know, certainly, this is providing affordable housing. It's a much better condition than what currently exists. Criteria G, sufficient space and appropriate locations, as evidenced by the fact that there's really only, I believe, one potential waiver and no variances that are associated with this project. I think in terms, when you look at the dimensional aspects of what's proposed here, the compliance with the redevelopment plan is extreme. We don't need a variance for impervious coverage, that's gone. We don't need any variances for setbacks, height, et cetera. So more than sufficient space to accommodate this project. And lastly, negative criteria, again, this is just to be conservative as possible, purpose of the record, certainly, no substantial detriment to the public good. I understand that the public does have some concerns about the parking, but the board did hear the testimony from the traffic expert, who has provided testimony on applications like this all throughout the state, has cited the Rutgers study. The parking, you know, will work on the site. And as the mayor had said, if there is any type of issue, the town will work with the residents of the street with permit parking. So I think the board can be comfortable that the grant of this waiver certainly will not provide for a substantial detriment to the public good. And lastly, I don't see any impairment to the zone plan, the zoning ordinance, or namely, the redevelopment plan that's been prepared for the site. As I had stated, this is an application that, point by point, advances the goals of the plan that was prepared by Mr. Ricky. So I think, you know, in sum, in totality, certainly, a variety of benefits that will flow from this application. And certainly, if there are any detriments, I don't see these detriments rising to the level of substantial. And substantial is the term that's used in the statute. And it's important to state that for the record, because any type of development, you know, two people can disagree whether something is gonna have some negative detriment. I guess, you know, two people can see one thing and see two different things. That's exactly why the law, you know, holds any detriments to a much higher standard than just any detriment. So that concludes my testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ossiello. No further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing no one have questions to this witness, have a motion for the openness to the audience?
Motion.
Second. Mike, thank you, Nate. Anyone from the audience wishing to question this expert on his testimony? Please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one comes forward, take a motion to close.
Motion.
Second. Mike, thank you, Nate.
Mr. Chairman, we have no further witnesses at this time. Obviously, our witnesses that have testified so far this evening are available for further questions from the board or the public, if so desired.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to open up to the general public for any comments, questions, or statements they'd like to make regarding this application. Please come forward, state your name and address. Ladies first, thank you.
Hi, my name is Joan Peters. I'm in fourteen forty-five Westfield Avenue. And I would just like to comment on the affordable piece. I think it's great, and I think it's overdue. And I think if the municipalities hadn't been fighting it for forty years, we wouldn't have to put in a whole bunch at the same time. And I think otherwise, I like, I will say, I live in Woodcrest, and a lot of the issues that you're talking about can be had, but I don't see them. So, good luck, but I just wanted to comment. Forty years, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Dean Russo, twenty-three Westfield Avenue. I am a resident, a business owner, and a building owner on Westfield Avenue. And I'd like to say that finally, something is happening positive on Westfield Avenue, besides the CVS building, which looks beautiful. When I'm walking up Westfield Avenue currently, it looks like it's a condemned community. And something like this building is nothing but positive. We need this. You know, I know some residents are concerned, but, you know, as far as your property values, this is going to do nothing but increase your property values. People love to walk to a downtown. If we can make Westfield Avenue and improve it to a downtown, it's going to be good for everyone. Within the three-block radius of Westfield Avenue, your property's gonna be worth more money, because people wanna get up, walk to a coffee shop, walk to a restaurant. It will be nothing but positive. But Mayor, I have to ask you, is there anything in the plan exploratory for a parking municipal lot?
Yes, Dean, I'm glad, I was gonna bring it up in my comments. My business administrator and I are talking about that as we speak. We, you know, I understand the residents' concerns, I truly do. We have professionals up here that are here to protect your concerns. You know, when they say one and three-quarter spot, and one young lady said, "What do you mean by three-quarters of a car?" No, I get what you're saying. These are the calculations the state comes up with, that these ladies and gentlemen use to look at these type of projects. Every downtown that I know of has a parking problem. Every downtown, wherever you go. This will be no different. I said it to Rich O'Connor back in 2004, when we named Westfield Avenue as a possible downtown village. If parking's gonna be the issue, you're gonna have nothing there, because there's not gonna be enough parking. Jim Ulrich, the administrator, and I have been talking. We are trying to look, as things come available, for some municipal parking, by meter, that people be able to park their car. We're looking to do some things on some side streets, on the other side of the road, on Joseph, now that the Investors Bank is going out. We might be able to do some different type of parking down there. So yes, our wheels are turning to try to solve as much problems as we can down there, Dean, and to make it vibrant. Like I said earlier, what's going on with Westfield Avenue? When's the A&amp;P gonna get built? When's Knights of Columbus? Well, here it is. Here it is. I mean, you're gonna get this with it. I do agree with you. On Washington Street, if people, you know, don't wanna live next to that, we'll buy the houses and put municipal parking in, no problem. That makes it even easier for us. But we'd rather have it on Westfield Avenue, honestly. But the thing is, at the end of the day, you are correct. If you can walk from Washington Street across the street to a coffee shop, to a sandwich shop, the one lady was saying about a restaurant, it's not gonna be Applebee's. There's not gonna be two hundred seats in there. It's gonna be, as the one person said, maybe forty seats in there, maybe. You know, the other thing is, maybe it's not gonna be a restaurant. It could be a professional service, an accountant's office, a lawyer's office, a one- or two-person show. So there's a lot of things that can and cannot be. But it's gotta be a development that we wanna be proud of. We put a lot of work into that pigsty that used to be the old Jack's Tavern area. There's a pigpen up there. We put a lot of work into that to make CVS look like a class building. That was our doing. Everybody wants to come cheap. This developer is not coming cheap here tonight. That render and he showed that that building is a beautiful building. Maybe some people's taste is different, I agree, I understand. But overall, it's a beautiful building. He's not putting cheap material up there. The building that's coming in across the street at the old A&amp;P site is gonna be a nice classy building. Again, I'm not in favor of these buildings. If I had my way, they wouldn't be. But I don't have my way, because it comes from a mandate from ports in New Jersey. Look at Walnut, across the street there. You had a bunch of old factories over there. Look what you have there now. Again, I'm not an apartment fan, but it's a beautiful site. The people that rented those buildings, apartments, I've met a few people now, have said they're beautiful on the inside. These units are gonna be beautiful on the inside. And I understand your concerns, and we, as a town, will try to work with you with those concerns. But just because you don't like it, it doesn't mean I'm gonna vote no, because we have another authority to answer to. We have a 2025, affordable housing review is done, and we've got an answer to it. Look what they're building on Walnut in Cranford. Look what they've built all over Cranford, Westfield. It's way too much, as far as I'm concerned. But you've got a governor that says, "I want more." He doesn't even want what he's got. He wants more. And I don't believe this should be built in Clark. This should be built in cities where there's mass transit, and people can walk to work and walk to a job. But that's not the reality anymore. This is not New Jersey circa 1970 anymore. This is a different progressive state we have. They want stuff like this, and we, the towns, get dumped on. One gentleman asked about sewage. Well, of course, we can handle the sewage, or we couldn't build it. There's DEP approval survey permits that gotta go through. The roadway valley has to approve it. If you can't get a sewer connection, you can't build a building. So a lot of these questions, we understand, but these are what our professionals are paid for. These are the questions that I have, the township council has for them, as we hear these projects. What about this, and what about that, and what about the other thing? Rich and Paul will tell you, they hear from me all the time. But this is the reality of it. So I do agree with you, Dean, there's gonna always be some bumps and bruises in new developments, and not everyone's gonna be happy, but it's a positive step forward for Westfield Avenue.
Absolutely. Lastly, is there anything, I know there's a problem with Washington Street traffic. Could you put any blinking twenty-five mile an hour signs?
We can do all that, Dean, but I'm gonna tell you something. I've been in government here twenty-eight years now. Washington Street has been a problem for twenty-eight years. There's not much we can do. I'm not gonna sit here, I'm not a massager. If you wanna massage, don't come to me. I don't have a massage license. I'm not gonna massage and tell you I can make it all better, and this is gonna be great, like some people have in government over the years. I'm not gonna do that to you. It's a reality. I live on Featherbed Lane, it's a Speedway. It's a reality. People are going to cut through. I had a councilman say to me, "Why don't we make Catherine Street a one-way coming out? That'll clear up the problem." I said, "Great, and we're gonna push it up to Bartel, down to Gertrude, and they're still gonna cut down Washington, Hinton, and Harrison." They're still gonna do that. There are certain things, folks, I'm sorry, I've been in this town my whole life, in government twenty-eight years, and I care about it as much as you. Not more, but as much as you. There's certain realities that government just can't fix. I can't, you know, my own mom, she's eighty-five years old. She drives, God bless her, she's great shape for her age. She drives all over. And you know what I tell her? "Ma, it's Union County, New Jersey, get over it." If you don't want traffic, then don't go out at three, four in the afternoon, which I don't want her to do, anyway. You know, don't decide to go to Route 22 in Springfield at four o'clock in the afternoon or Union. That's not a smart thing to do. You know, that's between nine-thirty and eleven o'clock in the morning, then you won't see Sal Bono Corso up that way, no matter what, unless I'm forced to be. This is a reality, folks. We have to learn to live with it. We may not like it, we may love it. Everybody's different.
Thank you.
You got it.
Augie Toby at twenty-six Westfield Avenue, otherwise known as Ace Hardware. Mr. Mayor, board, people in the audience. I've been here for forty years, owning property on Westfield Avenue. It's long, much too long it's been not having, finally have a development going on. That building that you're proposing is a beautiful, beautiful building. It will create more money, it will create wealth in our homes and in our buildings. It's a great facility, I 100% behind it. Thank you.
Nick Pacella, property manager for the condos at ten to twenty Washington and fifteen Westfield Ave. Once again, I would like to thank the applicant for the time and effort you've put into this project. You clearly have crossed all your Ts and dotted all your Is. And the building does look beautiful. I think it will make downtown Clark a much better place to be. The, you know, as someone who spends a lot of time on Washington Street, I hear the people's problems, and I see them, and I live them when I go there every day. But their problems are not with this building, their problems are with Washington Street. As Mayor Bono Corso has pointed out, it's been a problem for as long as anyone can remember. You know, some things that can be done, like have been mentioned, if there's any way to make that road wider, if there's any way to lower the speed, if there's any way to have, you know, police enforce the speed restrictions, this would help everyone on Washington Street out. Once again, it's not this building's issue. I think this building will be an asset to this area. But there are some issues on Washington. Street. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward? Seeing no one, I may ask for a motion to close.
Motion.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Nate. Any discussion in the board?
Mr. Chair, before you begin, if you're inclined to grant this application, I want to outline some conditions. Some of them may not have been necessarily addressed, but I would hope the applicant would agree with them. First, the applicant will comply with all the conditions included in the review letters of the planner, engineer, traffic engineer, and fire chief. While the plans did call out a bedroom distribution for the affordable housing, it did not call out that the units would be income-eligible, consistent with the uniform housing affordability controls, and that should be a condition that they will comply with that. There is an affordable housing developer fee. It's not attributable to the affordable, to the residential units. It is attributable to the commercial portion of this, and so whatever the 2.5% of equalized value for the commercial space would also be a condition. Those are all acceptable, correct, Mr.?
Correct, Mr. Cruz. Thank you.
All right, let me just go through a few more because they were done as a result As a result of back-and-forth discussion, there was an agreement by the applicant that all the affordables would not be clustered in one part of the building, but would rather be interspersed through each of the three floors. So, they're not clustered in one corner, and that was agreed to, correct?
Correct. Great suggestion by the chair.
Although this is contained within the engineer's report, you are going to apply for a Treatment Works approval permit and a Raritan Valley Sewerage Authority permit approval, and those are all standard conditions that are subsequent to this approval, so you could not build without those approvals being obtained from third parties.
That is correct.
There was also a discussion about flow rights. If there is a need for additional flow rights, that will be purchased by the applicant, correct? No tractor-trailers will be unloading on the site or in front of the site? Okay, what is, what did you agree to with respect to loading of tractor-trailers?
Certainly wouldn't happen on-site. You can't, and we can't accommodate that.
Okay, so no on-site loading, unloading?
No, no.
Oh, there's a loading zone, yeah.
Just no tractor-trailer unloading.
No tractor-trailer unloading on-site.
And obviously county planning board, too.
Yes, that's already in there, but yes, thank you for pointing that out.
They agree, please understand?
Well, I think this is where I'm going to need your help a little bit, Mr. Ricky, because of the lighting condition. There was an agreement through, with respect to the lighting. I have various notes, including that the lights would be altered to be warm light, less bright, provide for security lighting, consistent with applicable standards, and that the revised lighting plan would be approved by the township engineer and planner. Does that capture it all, or do you have more?
Yes, and an appropriate Kelvin range for the lighting can be determined, as well as an appropriate level for that security lighting at night as a compliance item.
But that would be a lighting plan that would be submitted for approval?
No objection.
Consistent with these comments?
Did you note no extra charge for parking? It's included in the rent?
Yes, that was one of the comments and one of, and I think two of the reports, so that's covered. So, again, it's all the conditions that were enumerated in the reports, they've agreed to. These are just ones that I want to highlight for the board before you consider this matter.
Just clarifying, too, that the rooftop amenities in the basement are optional under the plan, which would be a down-the-road determination.
And also the basement?
I said that.
All right, those were the highlights in terms of conditions. As I said, there are other conditions within the reports that will also be reflected in the resolution of the board approves it.
No objection.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chair, I apologize for interrupting you before you were ready to proceed.
No, no, thank you for that clarification.
That's very helpful.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question?
Certainly.
I think that Mr. Cruz will have to answer this, but the question I have is, does this project comply with all the standards? And would there be a basis for the applicant, if not approved, can appeal it and have the decision reversed?
Well, the first part of the question, I think that's more directed to Mr. Ricky, whether all this, he feels that all the standards contained in the redevelopment plan and those sections of the general zoning ordinance apply have been met. As a matter of practice, there are really two issues before you. There is a waiver for parking, for the commercial parking, that has been discussed extensively. That's the first issue. And there was a second waiver that I am slipping my mind right now. What was that second?
The width of the sidewalk on?
The width of the sidewalk, yes.
We recommended that reduction because the full, being forthright, we were thinking more along Westfield Avenue, and we carried that standard as well to Washington Street. Washington Street, clearly, more of a residential neighborhood. It was appropriate to have a residentially scaled sidewalk width.
Just one added comment. I do believe the planner did accurately state what the law is in terms of the burden of proof of the applicant and what has to be shown by the applicant to obtain that waiver, those waivers. In terms of the second part of your, or first part of your question about appealing it, yes, anyone can appeal a grant or a denial. Whether or not that appeal is sustained will be dependent upon the testimony that's presented before the board and whether you're satisfied with what was presented in terms of the written documentation and the testimony. So, yes, we live in a world where anyone can challenge anything. The question is, is there enough evidence to sustain your decision either for or against it?
Thank you.
You don't disagree with any of that, correct?
No, I agree with your assessment, Mr. Cruz.
Any other discussion on the board? Hearing none? Have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the plan with the waivers for the parking and the sidewalk waiver. To accept, I think it's a good site, a good building to begin downtown Westfield Avenue. I also go with the concern of the residents to hear what they need and what they say, and I think we are a responsive administration, have been there for whenever we can for the people, and we will continue to do that as we try to develop something nice in Clark on the downtown Westfield Avenue. Unfortunately, our forefathers didn't have the foresight to do it the right way, so what is really downtown Westfield, Clark? Central, Raritan, or Westfield? We're trying to develop it down on Westfield Avenue because of foot traffic. It'll be safer down there. Hopefully, we can do it. I really kind of thought we'd be a little bit ahead of the game at this time. We're not, but this is going to be the first real kickoff, this and the CBS all the way at the other end, and I will be supporting this tonight, and I make the motion to accept.
With the conditions that I?
With the conditions, as you explained, Albert. Yes, sir.
Well, with the CBS, they came in and they were too big, and we came in and said the parking's a little much. We worked with CBS. In this case, the parking really relies on street parking, and the more people we add, the more things we add, the more that street parking goes away. And I understand you want to put a parking deck or a parking garage or something, a parking area, but we don't even know where that's going to be, and that's the problem I'm having with this.
Well, that's, you're right, Mike.
Hold on, a motion's?
It's a real concern.
A motion's been made. We need a second, and then you can have full debate.
I'll second that.
All right, I apologize. I just wanted to get procedurally.
I just, that's what's going through my head. We've gone through this once before with CBS, and I want, don't get me wrong, I want a building, I want something there, I want a central, I want all this, but not at the point where I'm, we're crushing so many things in that we're relying on street parking when it's really not there, and I'm having trouble wrapping my head around it. So, that's where my head's at.
I agree with what you're saying, Mike. Parking is clearly an issue. The two applications we did in the immediate area previously have commercial space, and they did include parking in their calculations and parking spaces. In fact, one of the applicants provided additional parking for the area, for the existing demand in this area. I don't believe giving a waiver for them not including commercial space is appropriate or acceptable in this application. Understand what the mayor's saying. We had to develop a plan based on the state's requirements. It was accepted, but, you know, a smaller building, less units would have allowed the same amount of parking that they have now, which would have then given them adequate parking for the commercial needs. My thoughts on it. Anyone else have comments?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I can't disagree with you or Michael on this. I don't. I really don't, in theory. But let's take this statement, less units. The problem with less units is, as you know, you know this, but for the people out there, is you have to pay for the affordable units that are going to be at a discounted rate. That's why high-density development in this affordable housing causes these type of buildings in what you're seeing throughout Union County and the state of New Jersey. I don't disagree with my colleagues. There are two very good board members up there. I think everybody's a good board member on this board. They work hard for the best of Clark. Where we're different is, we're going to have to do it and deal with it as we go and do the best we can, because we have to have those number of units. First question I asked when this was proposed, does it have to be that many? And when you break down the cost of construction, you break down the affordable units, and construction now has gone up considerably. You all know that since we've had bidonomics in. Everything is through the roof. It was costing you $80, $90 for a sheep plywood. This is the results of all that. So, I do agree with my esteemed colleagues. They're good people. They have great concerns for the community at large, as we all do, but I'm going to be accepting this and voting yes tonight because we're going to have to just deal with this on a case-by-case basis, one by one, and try to find that additional parking and do this thing, or we're going to be stuck with Westfield Avenue as it is forever and not meet our affordable housing units, and it's going to cause us more problems up to in 2025. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Can I say one other thing? I guess the question that I have is that if we're taking care, if the residential parking is not the concern, and it's a commercial, wouldn't the commercial space going there produce the same amount, maybe less cars than the commercial spaces that are there?
With abandoned Knights of Columbus.
Well, there's the sushi place, and when the Knights of Columbus is open, they have cars that go there for parties.
They've been closed for years.
Yeah, but we go back and say...
Sushi place, I don't believe is generating a ton of business.
And you got the bagel store next door.
That is open in the morning.
Okay, I'm just, I don't see how, you know, I want you guys to... It's not just... It's not just the one place. You're, the whole big picture of all these apartments that are coming around, and if you're not going to provide parking for that restaurant or whatever it is that's going to go there, they're going to park on the street, and then another one's going to say, "Let's park on the street," and another one. And those 25 spaces that is supposedly being thrown around that are on the street are going to go away real quickly, and then it becomes congested, and you have major issues. That's where my issue is.
No further discussion, take a roll call vote?
Mayor Bono Corso?
Yes.
Councilman Manetti?
I'm going to say yes.
Mr. Kaj?
No.
Mr. Altman?
No.
Mr. Clay?
Application is denied.
Thank you very much for your time.
We're still in session at this point. I'd like a motion to open the meeting to the public for any discussions they might have.
Moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Nate. Anybody from the public wishing to come forward, discuss any issues with the planning board? Please do so. Seeing no one come forward, like a motion to close to the public? Oh.
Just a question for you. There's Hoboken, okay, which really doesn't have any parking, and there's hundreds of restaurants. Maybe not hundreds, but 75 restaurants probably in a quarter of a mile. So, you guys are stifling this project and not advancing Westfield Avenue when there's a sushi place there already that's very busy, a bagel shop that's very busy, and there's always, I'm on Westfield Avenue every day, and there's spaces across the street, there's spaces in front of my store. I'm not following your logic. Do you want to advance the township, or do you want to stifle the township? That's my question to you.
We want to advance the township, but not at the point of making the township where there's nowhere to park, nowhere going on.
I, in my opinion, I think you're being unreasonable. I really, really do, because you, would you like it the way it is? I walk down Westfield Avenue, I'm embarrassed, embarrassed. Do you guys ever walk down Westfield Avenue? Are you proud to be a Clark citizen?
No, hold on a second. This is a public comment period, not question and answer. So, you have a comment?
That's my comment. Thank you.
Susan Ray, 11 Washington Street. A lot of our problems are right now, we have businesses from Rawway on Westfield Avenue and Madison Hill Road parking on our street. Plus, we have the apartments, plus Westfield Avenue businesses, and the traffic on our street, like I said, is very bad. They do 50, 60, 70 miles an hour. Somebody's going to get clobbered coming out of that back parking lot when people are living there. We have, we have another town that parks on our residential street. I don't think that's fair. They could park on Westfield Avenue and Madison Hill Road. There's spaces there for them. We don't, the building, we don't mind. It's the parking, it's the speeding, and it's other towns parking on our streets. Thank you.
Linda Marho, 34 Washington Street. I agree, the affordable housing and the units are not going away, and I don't think anyone's opposed to the building. It's the parking that's the biggest concern. The building's going to go up, we know that. I think I myself has accepted that. It's just the conditions of the parking that needs to be addressed before we move forward, because once it's up, you're not going to find parking, and a parking garage is going, is in the foreseeable future perhaps, but that's not going to solve the problem of what's going up now and the parking that's needed for today.
Well, with that comment, that's correct, but there could be another five to 10 years before we find that spot for, or it could be a week, who knows? God only knows. So, basically, Westfield Avenue is going to stay the way it is, and that's okay with me. I don't live down there. If that's what you folks want, that's fine by me. Well, then, we're going to have a lot of discussions in this town in 2025 when our affordable housing numbers come. Again, I'm not an affordable housing fan, I'm not an apartment fan, I'm against high-density development, I truly am, but I understand the realities of this state and what has to be done, and it's happening all around us. And guess what? There's never going to be enough parking in downtown Clark. That's a reality. Mark my words, someday, 10 years from now, you're going to say, "Sal, you are..." Mark my words, someday, 10 years from now, you're going to say, "Sal, you were right. There's never going to be enough parking," and people are going to do what I did when I went to Westfield two weeks ago for dinner. I look around, it's too cold for me to walk, I went to another spot. That's what happens.
I get that for the retail aspect, but when you're living there and you're looking for a place to park, because I want to go home and go to sleep because it's the end of my day.
Well, that's your driveways for, correct?
There's not a parking space for me because it wasn't planned properly. Two different issues.
Well, we can handle that for you. I told you that. We can handle that with resident parking if and when it becomes a problem. That's what drivers are for. People park on streets, it happens. And like I said, some of the things you're talking about on Washington Avenue, I'm never going to lie to anybody, but you may not, you may love or not like what I'm going to tell you, it's never going to be solved. It's always going to be a cutthroat. There's nothing we can do. I've had four police chiefs look at that for you, four different traffic people look at that for you. It's always going to be a cutthroat, and you talk about speeding, 50 miles an hour. With all due respect, cars can't get up to 50 miles an hour on that street. It's not long enough when you come out of the middle of a street. If you tell me you're at one end and a car starts at the other end, maybe when they get down, but when you live in the middle, a car can't get from 50 to the middle. It's impossible. I've had studies done by police departments. I've been working on this for a long time, and you know what the area just basically comes? We have radar up there. We've had police up there. We had a meeting in Room 30. Councilman Toll had it. It just is what it is sometimes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing actually nobody left, I'd like a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Nate. Any new business to discuss? Any old business to discuss? Our next meeting is April 4th, May 2nd, June 6th, if we have material. A motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Nate. Meeting adjourned.